Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022. This is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. I assisted with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press *9 to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there's a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. Okay, I ask that you all join me. Just look at that. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. The mission for Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful and lifelong learners. The next item of business is oral communication. If anybody is intending that wants to speak to the committee, now is the time. Goals for oral communication are: Public will have the opportunity to, every school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. So do we have anybody who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to recognitions. And I think I'll start because our hockey team made it to the state semifinals for the first time in a long time. I think the whole community was behind them in one way or another, whether they liked hockey or not. And I think it brought this tremendous excitement and buzz. The team was really fun to watch. They, I think, impressed everybody across the state. I think Coach Geary's best quote that I saw the day after the quarterfinal was that, you know, Jack Costanza was the best hockey player in the state tonight. And I just thought it kind of captured just the talent that was on the ice in terms of all the kids. So, bravo. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Keith.
Family Science Night at West Parish. Took my kids on Friday. My little five-year-old ensured my eight-year-old that we weren't going there to learn anything, but maybe to get a little bit to school. Going back to school. But yeah, they even, they made some toys. They're still playing with them. So it was pretty cool. I think it was the sport of the PTO. It's special recognition for that.
That's great. Oh, you did do it last week. Okay. And I know we have, okay, so anybody else? No? Okay, the last thing I'll mention is, I know there were five of our track team members who went to Nationals. And Andrew Quelo is here for the Student Advisory Council. I see his name, and I'm hoping he's gonna put on his camera. Hopefully. Yes? No? I have no way to...
Here it comes.
There we go. Hi, Andrew.
Hi.
We thought you would at least lead with your track news because you were one of the students and one of the athletes that competed.
He's driving.
He's driving.
He should not be driving.
Oh.
So we can do it later. We can talk to you as a chair.
I'll be at my destination in like three minutes. So if you guys could just come back to me.
Okay. Yep, you put your camera on when you're ready.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Good choice.
All right. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So move second. Maria, we'll call both, please.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Ms. Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Jefferson Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And Mr. Minion.
Yes.
So the next item of business is deliberations on educational issues. And I would hate to have Emily and Anna begin their report to only be interrupted.
Yeah, I can do, we can do a couple of shorter things.
That'd be great.
You can start off, yeah, no problem. Great. So I'll share here. In terms of tonight's update, I don't want to share this. I'll let you slideshow this. So again, our primary objective is to safely educate our students in our schools every day to maximize learning, address our students' full needs and support community family needs. Tonight, we'll get a partnership update from the Gloucester Education Foundation in a moment, a little bit. A professional learning update from Greg Bach and Katie Broh. MCAS is beginning, so we'll just give you an update on the schedule for that. Code update, and then the heart of the matter tonight is the next step of FY 2023 budget development. And that will be a review and approval of the public hearing budget. So we'll just jump into, you were, I handed out and also shared with you earlier tonight the schedule of programs for the March 29th early release day. Dan, Greg, and Katie will help you, will just describe a little bit of the great work that is planned for all of our staff through next week.
Thank you. I'm not gonna go over the whole thing. You can take a picture, maybe just highlight a few of them. And I would be remiss if we didn't highlight one of the big pieces, which is, and Amy Kim couldn't be with us tonight to talk about it, but she's extremely excited about this presentation. It's at the high school for the full GHS faculty as well as district-wide clinical staff. And it's the co-author of Helping Traumatized Children Learn and Creating and Advocating for Trauma-Sensitive Schools, Joel Rastuccia, will be presenting. Principal Matt Fusco, Principal of Veterans School, is going to be introducing Joel. And the book that Joel co-authored, according to Amy, is known in the industry as The Purple Book and has been responsible for shaping many programs and careers, and in her opinion, is the basis for the work at the Veterans School. A GHS student will also be speaking at the presentation to share her experiences and the kind of assistance she got. And also Scott Allen and Ed Jacobs, who spearheaded Handle with Care, are going to be in the presentation as well and then training the entire police department that same day. They're gonna give out 100 of the books. And I also want to mention that it's either cosponsored or fully sponsored, I'm not sure, but it's quite significant by the Gloucester Health Department. So we just wanted, this is a, there've been a number of things that the Gloucester Health Department has partnered with us on over the years. And recently, they've been quite generous with helping with financial support of a number of things. So just wanted to share that. So that's one of the big ones. One of the other big pieces going on is we have the author of this book, The Blue Book, called The Knowledge Gap. And Natalie Wexler is the author. And this is very big in educational circles lately and really is an examination of the American educational system and the role of content knowledge, deep subject matter knowledge, and the role in literacy and comprehension. And this is a book that our teachers requested to read and do as a study group. And we got Natalie Wexler to actually do the presentation on Tuesday. So she's going to be Zoomed in live to the O'Malley Auditorium and all of our K through five teachers who work with students around the ELA. So that's classroom teachers, Title I teachers, special educators, anybody who is working with kids around literacy will be there. And it's true part, one is to have a presentation from Natalie Wexler relative to the book that she wrote, and everybody will have a copy, get a copy of this as well. Part two, and then some Q and A. And that sets the stage for the pilot update, for the ELA pilot that you've heard about. That is the moment where the coaches, and I will share, this is sort of setting the stage for why are we changing our, adopting a new ELA program that has at its focus a lot more of the knowledge building that we recognized has been missing. That's how the two are connected. We'll then spend an hour talking about our professional development plan, rollout plans, what to expect, and those kinds of things. So that's, that will be happening at the O'Malley Auditorium. And, there's Katie. Katie, if you wouldn't mind talking a little bit about the one of the big pieces that you have going on as well as the ESP training?
Sure, thank you, Greg. Sorry I'm not there in person. I'm getting over a cold, so I've been wearing a mask all day and I'm hoping to not, not spread my germs in person. So one of the things we've been really working towards is making sure that we are supporting our ESPs are with really some strong professional development going forward and meeting their needs for supporting our diverse learners. So we have a few options for paraprofessionals coming up for the PD day. So we have visualizing problem solving from concrete to abstract for, which is gonna be presented by Nicole Bridge. And that is a Zoom session. We also have Supporting Ls with Special Needs for students with, in K to five. Creating predictability and safety for our students in uncertain times. So we've been partnering with the North Shore Consortium and Jen Orlando. And she is part of what's called the Connections Program at the North Shore Consortium. So she is supporting us with social emotional needs this year as well as has offered to provide some professional development for our teachers in regards to really supporting with, creating predictability and safety and routines for how we're coming out of the pandemic. So for our students that are in preschool and kindergarten and first grade and really have, there's been a great impact around regulation, how they regulate themselves, how they attend, and what that impact has really had on their learning and strategies for supporting them. In addition, for special education teachers, we, and all special education staff, we do have Michael Joyce coming out from, he's an attorney that's gonna be coming out and doing some tips and tricks and strategies for special education law and really ensuring that we have strong IEPs that are developed for students going forward.
Thank you, Katie. I see Andrew's here, just wanna wrap this up. But thank you, Greg and Katie. What we have on the screen here is just a little bit about how it's organized. So you can see organized by grade span. There are programs specifically for teachers, special education teachers, specialists, paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, or school secretaries. And then, as you've heard already, aligned with many of the things that you've been learning about from us this year and focusing on terms of our priorities. Star 360, program on that. Literacy instruction at the middle school. And then the areas that Katie and Greg talked about in terms of moving forward and our support of special education students and especially, you know, writing effective IEPs. And then tied to the literacy instruction, our ELA pilot, and also tied at the high school to, tied, and actually across many grades, you know, how are we responding and supporting students during the pandemic? So really, you know, very closely tied all year and the ongoing work we have. So it's really, when I first saw the plan last week, because Katie, Amy, principals, and others, you know, and Greg work on this, I said, I really need to, we need to show this to you and show this to the community because it's so well organized, so thorough, so diverse, and so comprehensive. So I want to make sure you saw that. I'll turn this off. And, because I see Andrew's there. It's not a corner, wait back, Craig.
Thank you for coming.
Andrew, that was your phone.
Everybody, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Andrew Quelo. I'm here representing the Executive Board of Student Council. And I'm here to report on the things we've been doing in the last few days. We've had a really successful week at GHS. We've had, we started up MCAS testing, and we had a successful blood drive last week. Throughout this week, we've been practicing for the NHS induction that is gonna be held tomorrow. I believe we have 43 new inductees for NHS, which is really exciting. On March 29th, we're planning on doing, NHS is planning on doing a cleanup throughout the day of GHS. And we also have the GHS Theaters Program, Spring Musical Footloose. They're performing next weekend on Thursday, March 31st at 7:00 PM. Friday, April 1st at 7:00 PM. And Saturday, April 2nd at 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM. And as Ms. Clancy mentioned before, we had our hockey team that made a really good run in the playoffs and kind of brought that, that school spirit within all of us. And as she mentioned before, we also had our national team, our track team, qualify for Nationals. It was our sprint medley team and our girls freshman, Sky Shalino. And that was really nice. We got to go out to New York. And it was the first time that we had qualified for Nationals in five years. So that was really nice as well.
Andrew, can you mention who's on the relay team?
Yeah, on the sprint medley relay team, it's Aiden Almeida, Sam Ashwell, Colby Rochford, and then me. And then Sky Shalino was racing in the freshman 400.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Looking forward to NHS inductions and the spring musical as well. Thank you for having me, guys.
Thanks for coming. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Good night. The next item of business, we will have a presentation with the Gloucester Education Foundation. Emily Siegel is the executive director and Anna O'Connor is the incoming board president.
So hi, my name is Anna O'Connor, and I presently serve as the President and Board Director of Gloucester Education Foundation. I joined the foundation eight years ago, shortly after I had retired from the Gloucester Public Schools after serving 35 years as an educator and administrator in the district. Being a native of Gloucester and graduating from Gloucester High, my husband and I raised our children here. Now we have grandchildren that are in the school. And actually, this year, we'll be celebrating three generations of graduates from Gloucester High School because our granddaughter is graduating. Yeah. So it's an honor to be part of this incredible foundation with not only the strong support that we have with the district, with Ben, with Greg, and the entire district, but also with the amazing generosity and support that we have from our community that truly cares about education. And so tonight, Emily, our executive director, is going to be presenting some of the programs and the work that we've been doing with the district. So I hope you enjoy it.
Sure. And do you prefer, as a group that I'm presenting, to you or to the screen?
I think to us.
To us? Okay, great. Ben's gonna pull up some slides. But just by introduction, because I don't know all of you, Emily Siegel. And I've been the executive director at the Gloucester Education Foundation since the start of the school year, taking the reins from the wonderful Aria McLeveney, who remains involved and a great support to me and to others at the foundation. I worked in education for 15 years as an after-school teacher and program director, and then in public policy across Massachusetts, but primarily in Cambridge and Boston. And then was working statewide with districts on school redesign work as well as in a few other states around the country. And then I took a hiatus from education work to open a nonprofit in and retreat center, coincidentally, in an abandoned elementary school in the middle of the desert in rural Arizona. And I did that for six years. And the call of home brought me back here. And my family lives in Rockport. So being back in Massachusetts and settling in Cape Town has been really wonderful. My son is a kindergarten at Plum Cove as of January 3rd. And my daughter will follow suit in a few years. So proud also to be a Gloucester parent. Okay, so I'm gonna provide an update tonight about the work GF is doing. I know GF is very familiar to some of you and perhaps newer to others. So Ben, if you wanna pull us forward. Just to share our mission, vision, and values as a refresher. So we serve to drive innovation, encourage creativity, expand student opportunities, and empower educators to improve teaching and learning in the Gloucester Public Schools. Our vision is that students in the district will be engaged and enthusiastic about their education, prepared to reach their fullest potential, dedicated to community engagement. And our core values that guide our work are leadership, integrity, culture of excellence, and community engagement. So since it's founded in 2006, somebody asked the other day, when's our 15th anniversary party gonna happen? And sadly, we had to be like, oh, that passed. We'll have to wait for the 20th. But since the founding more than 15 years ago, I'm so excited to share this figure. We've raised over $9 million to support programs in the Gloucester Public Schools. When I started in August, we're using the phrase over $8 million. And then we looked closely and it was over 8.7. And then I looked again yesterday and was like, oh, we've had a couple of good years of fundraising. We're over $9 million at this point. This year, our fiscal year ends next week. So these numbers are pretty solid for the end of our FY '22. We're on track to raise over $616,000. And that's due, as Anna said, to the incredible generosity of this community, individuals, organizations, businesses, a few foundations, and most are based right here in Gloucester. So we're really a foundation of this community, for this community. And I have just been so impressed with just how committed this community is to its schools. So to share some historic program highlights, I think GF has been well-known as an organization that funds a lot of STEM and arts programs. Those have been our two main areas of focus over the past 15 years. See some photos here from the aquaponics lab over at O'Malley, 3D printing. On the art side, funding visiting artists to come into schools. You can see the acorn pressed from the old Folie code printers that's housed in O'Malley. As well as events like Countdown to Kindergarten that engage families and get students and their parents really excited about entering the Gloucester Public Schools. But I want to share some of the things we're doing now as we add on to the arts and STEM work that we're doing. So these are some photos from this year. So some current program highlights. I'll just walk you through these. You might see some familiar faces. Top left, this is the Gordon Summer STEM Program that's at the Beeman School that started as a Beeman-only program and has expanded over the years with support from the Gordon Foundation to serve fourth and fifth graders in the summer doing STEM and engineering work. In the middle on the top there, those are Plum Cove students reading from amazing new books supplied by the Art for Equity Program, which was GF's first grant to a student, Mila Barry, to do a combination of public art projects and then using the proceeds to buy books by diverse authors of color, queer authors, and make sure that our school libraries and classrooms are stocked with really rich literature that reflect the students in our classrooms. And the right, you can see O'Malley Academy doing some hands-on cooking, healthy cooking with a partner, The Open Door. In the middle, instrumental music. We've been really proud this year. We've raised $62,000 to support instrumental music lessons for grades four through eight and grades four and five. That was really on hold during the pandemic, as I'm sure you're all aware. And the middle school bandleader came to us in the fall and said, we're at risk of losing a generation of new musicians. There's no feeder into the middle school band program. And if there's no strong middle school program, there's no feeder to the high school. And the Doc Siders doesn't have any experienced musicians. So we worked hard and scrambled this fall to find money to support lessons for fourth, fifth, fourth and fifth graders and then also more individualized instruction for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. To the right of that are Kids in the Auto Tech Program at the high school. The Lion Wha Auto Group just wrapped up a really generous three-year, $150,000 gift through GF to enhance the auto tech program. And not official yet, but they have committed to another three years to do that just recently. So you'll be hearing more about that in the coming weeks. And that's to grow that program and allow for two teachers so that the students are doing more hands-on work, less looking and watching, and more actually getting their hands greasy and doing. Bottom left, you can see a digital photo lab at the high school, which got a complete equipment upgrade this past fall. And then lower right, this is the DECA kids, including Anna's granddaughter, who were at the state tournament. Was that just two weeks ago?
Yes.
And this is an example, I think, of like the kinds of things we're funding, you know, as we're in and coming through the pandemic that are a little different than some of our traditional programming. But the pandemic made necessary, right? So DECA, something that would normally be funded through boosters and student fundraising, that was really hard to do during the pandemic. It continues to be. And GF wanted to acknowledge that and make sure that all students have the opportunity to participate in that, even though it's not a program we've typically funded. So here's a full funding list of this school year thus far, September through March 23rd. What we funded, 21 programs. Some of the ones I just spoke about are up there. Couple other ones to call out. The new GHS Mentor Project is a new one-on-one mentoring program supporting juniors and seniors in developing post-secondary plans in partnership with Wellspring House. And that's been many years in the making and is finally launching the new mentor training next week with 15 community mentors that will work side by side with students here at the high school. The Gender Equity and STEM Club is up and running here at the high school. And through that, students of all gender identities are looking at careers in STEM fields and what are the gender dynamics that come into play that impact people's ability to progress in those fields? And is there one more I wanted to call out? A mindful toolkit. So GEF has funded for a couple of years now. Noam Graham, who's a community educator, to do mindfulness work in the schools. And it feels like it's really nicely related to a lot of the other mental health and wellness work that the GBS is doing. But Noam's been working in three elementary schools this year. It's a nice extension of something that had to be fully virtual last year. And now she's able to actually go into classrooms and work with students. So GEF in January finalized a strategic plan that's been a long time in the making, as Anna can attest to. And the work on this started last year, took a pause during parts of the pandemic, started back up again. And we've just finalized a three-year strategic plan that really focuses in on the three areas of our organization. And I wanna just focus on programs tonight because I think it relates most closely to obviously your work as a school committee. But up here are the four kind of big picture goals of what GEF is looking to do around programs over the next three years. And some of this will feel really familiar, and some of it, I think, is GEF pushing themselves to work in a in a different way as the organization becomes more sophisticated. So as always, we're looking to fund a diversity of programs. And I think the key words here are all students and active and engaged learning. I feel like that's sort of the hallmark of GEF programs is a GEF-funded program, you'll typically see kids out of their seats, doing, performing, experimenting, whether it's in the arts or sciences or another field. And we really wanna make sure that all types of students and learners are being able to participate in those programs, including vulnerable learners, English language learners, special education students, adult students. The second one, GEF would really like to support two to three, over the next three years, two to three really big transformational ideas. So this idea of like district-wide initiatives that cross multiple grades, multiple subject areas, and have this potential to shift district culture in lasting ways. And you know, GEF's early work, the C Initiative, was something that GEF did in its early years. That was a big district-wide science initiative. And I think there's a lot of interest in trying to get a few more big initiatives like that off the ground in the coming years. This third one, which I know is of great interest to this group and to district leadership, is just making sure that there's a really clear focus on the transitions of students as they transition into kindergarten, middle school, high school, and beyond. And so knowing that those are challenging points for students, for teachers, and for families. As a new kindergarten parent, I can attest to this, right? Like, for each say five-year-old. And so, you know, these these transition years are so critical. And also thinking about the vertical alignment. What does a coherent K-12 experience look like? And what are the touchpoints along the ways of those key milestone years? So we were really excited that Greg submitted this great proposal to us, which was funded in full for this celebration of learning for fifth and sixth graders this June. I don't know if you've had a chance to talk to the committee about that, but a really interesting way to bring together the fifth and sixth grade community in the O'Malley Building and to think about learning not just as teacher to student, but student to student, parent to student, teacher to student, family. So those kinds of programs. And then lastly, just making sure we're really articulate about the idea that we're always working in close partnership with the district. Ben, Greg, and I meet monthly. We talk far more frequently than that. This is my third day in a row with Ben. And making sure that we're working together, that it's not transactional, right? That it's collaborative. And that it's not just for the sake of saying we work together, but it's really in service of one another's shared goals. So we've carefully followed Ben's entry plan and now his plan for continuous improvement. And we're making sure that we're supporting the goals of this district through the programs that we fund. So the next two slides, I only included just so people could have copies of them. I'm not going to go through them, but these are the other goals around external affairs, how we interact with the public, with the community, with our donors. And then the last one is internal affairs. How do we govern our organization so that it's sustainable, it's fiscally sound? Leadership is stable, so we're around for fifteen plus more years to support the Gloucester schools. So to close, just thinking about our impact, I think people often think about GEF impact. When that question is posed, it's like, how many students are served? What are students learning? What are students getting? Of course, that's important, but GEF, you know, the impact touches so many different kinds of stakeholders in Gloucester. It's not just students. So of course, we're increasing opportunity for students to participate in those active, engaged learning experiences in school, out of school, like in O'Malley Academy in the summer. But we're also empowering educators. So in communities where there's no ed foundation, where a teacher can apply and say, I have this brilliant idea and I wanna do this thing, like, that dream dies. So to have an ed foundation that encourages teachers to dream big and then can match those ideas or resources and support is hugely important. Attracting and retaining families, one of our big priorities, is making sure families know this is an amazing school district. You know, Gloucester's a wonderful community, but also that the schools here offer things that are unique to the region and unique to this state. We always wanna serve as a partner to school and district leaders, the principals, you know, department heads, Greg and Ben can really kind of help them bring the outside-the-box ideas to life. Because of the constraints of a budget, the constraints of a workday, sometimes it can be hard to pursue those ideas. And we hope we're seen as a partner that can help you make those things happen. And lastly, I think we're an entry point for the Gloucester community into schools. We have a lot of funders who don't have kids in the school system. We have funders who send their kids to private school. We have funders whose kids have graduated. We have funders who are retirees who raise their kids in another community. But people give to GEF because they wanna support the schools and they see that as a doorway in. And so we really wanna make sure that we are serving as that entry point for donors, for volunteers, and champions of our schools and our communities. I'll end there, and Anna and I can take any questions you might have.
Not really questions, just to say, yeah. So I was on the school committee in two thousand and six when Ed Choke here first came and presented to us with this idea for an ed foundation. And at that time, the economy was really not doing so great. We were cutting, we were lucky to get a level service budget, a total level funded budget here up here. We came forward with this idea, and now, let's see, nine million dollars in fourteen, fifteen years later. You know, here we are still, and you guys are like so integrated into the school and the city. It's amazing. But as I said, back then, the purpose was to have fun things we just couldn't afford, or things we had to cut. And now we're looking at the extras that you provided for us. So I think the next fifteen years are gonna be even better. So thank you for all the board.
Thank you. But that's good to hear that historical perspective. As a new person, sometimes I can lose sight of the fact that this started as a little idea fifteen years ago under much different circumstances than we are now.
And I was an educator, so I remember those days.
I don't have a question, but I just wanna follow along Greg's way because I've been on committee fourteen years. I can't tell you how wonderful, Anna, it is to see you again. And I haven't seen you in so long. And I am beyond impressed how this presentation tonight, it's like you two have been here forever. You know, you know this foundation, the way you're encouraging and talking about donors and things like that. It's like, it's like you've been here for a while, even though you're new faces. But beyond impressed, Warren Law will forever impress me as well. But there's a lot, a lot of good work coming from your foundation. And I can't even imagine what our schools would be like without that foundation. Because like Greg said, back when you began, we we were making cuts in everything we were doing. And this was that shining light that came forward, and it's still here, bigger and brighter, and it's just awesome. So thank you, ladies, for your dedication, because you're touching a lot of students every day in the things that you do.
Sam? Yeah, similar, and I have a question, so a comment. So I graduated from Gloucester High School in two thousand and four. And then the Gloucester Education Foundation came in two thousand and six. So I look at these opportunities, and there was nothing like that. You know, when I, I had a good education, but the enrichment opportunities were very, very different. And as a parent of a kindergartner, and then someday another kindergartner in two years, I'm just so grateful that they're gonna have those opportunities in this district, both as a graduate of this community and also as a parent. So, great work.
So I echo my colleagues. I echo my colleagues, you know, everything, you know, from Power of Play, which hasn't happened to you. I don't think, you know, there's so many pieces of what the Gloucester Education Foundation and Gloucester Schools. I actually do have a question. As a first and third-grade parent at one of the schools, one thing I've wondered about is some projects go to some elementary schools and not others. And I'm sort of wondering how that's determined and why that is, and sort of how we can sort of equalize that a little more.
Yeah, I think it's a great question and a valid concern, right? To wanna make sure kids are having equitable experiences across all the elementary schools. So in general, the way that projects originate for GEF, and this is by design, is that teachers come to us, teachers or district leaders or principals come to us. And there have been lots and lots of times that somebody in the community or somebody on our board has had this great idea. And unless that idea finds a champion within a school, whether it's a classroom teacher, or support staff, administrator, it's not gonna get traction. So by design, teachers and school staff come to us with proposals. I think that, I think GEF can do more to get out and make sure that teachers are aware of the opportunity, aware that our grant application process is not a huge, heavy lift. That's not to say it's not extra work for a teacher. And I think especially over the past two years, that's been a difficult proposition. But I think we can do more to make sure teachers are aware. I think that in our work, my work with the principals, making sure that the principals are really identifying, like, are there ideas and sparks that they're seeing that a little bit of a connection and a little bit of a push could get a teacher to actually apply for the funds? And then going back to this idea of sort of like the big ideas, the transformational district-wide, I think we're really looking for more of those. And I think we're looking to the district and the school leaders in particular to see, you know, what are these things with the new ELA curriculum rolling out? Is there something to supplement that that could help bring that literature alive across all of the elementary schools, for example? That isn't in the budget, but is something that we could step in and support. So I think it's both of those, gotta come from both ends. And then, yeah, I think, I think I'll stop there.
Great.
Does that, does that answer?
Yeah.
Thanks for the presentation, Emily. Some things I wanted to ask you about and some things I want to thank you for. My son's gonna be in fourth grade next year, so hearing about that connection between each of the grade levels that, you know, with the musical education going, you know, progressing through the grade levels. As a casual musician myself, you know, I teach my kids to play keyboards and stuff like that. To see that there's an outlet for that at such a young age, I think it's really important to foster that through their lives. And also, I wanted to ask about the Gordon STEM Summer Program. Is that something associated with Gordon College?
No.
Okay, I was wondering what the Gordon was.
Yeah, no, Gordon is the name of the funder.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Sure. So, and others should chime in because I'm still fairly new. So I have, actually, I got to visit this program before, right when I came on board last summer. I got to visit once. It's a program that is housed at the Beeman School, is at this point open to students across the district. Even though it originally started with just Beeman students, led by teachers. And is, Greg, are they still doing a series of one-week sessions?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk a little bit about it. You're welcome to do the intro and then I can share a little bit more if you'd like.
A series of sessions throughout the summer with kids doing hands-on STEM learning using a Museum of Science curriculum.
Yes.
And over the last few years, they've done a series of one-week, over the course of five weeks, they've done sort of one-week modules that students could sign up for four days. And they are, I think about adjusting this year, maybe two-week stretches so that there's a little bit less coming and going, it's hard to manage. The other thing that I will note for this summer, that program expanded significantly last year. This year, it's going to not be quite as big, but we'll still accept and encourage students from all schools to come, but it won't have as many classrooms because, and this is good news, the Beeman School is projected to have construction happening on the modulars. So we're going to be doing some shifting of the, some of the programs to West Parish. Science will stay there, but we needed to have a little bit smaller footprint for this summer. So we'll still have it open to everybody, but smaller number overall. And then hopefully build the foundation for just re-expanding next summer with, you know, more classes running, so I don't think this is.
And the funder is somebody who made his career in engineering. So he specifically cares deeply about the engineering aspect that's involved.
Thanks, thanks, Emily and Anna. I almost feel like I have to make a statement request. But I really don't, believe me. Great work. I did write down a couple of notes. One of the things I wrote down is, programs ever run their course? I mean, is there a review of the programs and you say, you know what, this really just doesn't happen?
Yes.
What does that look like internally?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, again, being new, I'm gonna speak from what I've seen and heard and Anna can chime in. Anna has chaired our programs committee for a number of years. But there are certainly programs that are experimented with, right? Like, there's some R and D that happens through GEF funding and like, didn't quite work. And maybe it can be tweaked and revisited and done in a slightly different shape. Or maybe it just, either there isn't the demand, or there isn't the need, or the execution just isn't where it needs to be. And then there's things that go on year after year and are improved upon. And we have some programs that we earmark funding for each year, like elementary theater. Where every year in our budget, we have slated that each elementary school will get money for that so they can plan ahead of time. They know that money's there. And it looks a little bit different at each school every year, but they can count on those funds.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, there's been programs that have been in the district for a long, very long time. Like, for example, the Mad Hot Ball that we always had to the graders. But of course, we haven't had that for the past two years because of, you know, COVID. And it's not taking place this year because everything's been so itchy. So that might be one of the programs that might be looked at to see, you know, whether that's something they wanna continue with or if they want to do something else that, you know, brings the fifth graders in the district together.
The only other thing I had is, I read about, when I first came on the school, I read about the mentoring program, which I think is a great idea. Most of my associates in Gloucester are friends of successful guys that have done well in their lives, just excellent role models. I'm always interested in programs that kind of serve underserved kids or connecting them to people that are successful as kind of examples for them. Certainly support that. If I twisted some arms and said, hey, I want you to get involved in this program with the GEF, what would that look like? Would I say, go see Emily?
Yep. No, thankfully you don't say that. So that program is really unique. It's a three-way partnership between the Gloucester High School Council Department, GEF, and Wellspring House. And each partner brings something on a different table. We bring funding and some support with mentor recruitment. Wellspring houses a coordinator. Her name is Valerie Rafferty, and GEF helped hire her. James Cook and Laura Carlson from the high school sat in on those interviews. So we made sure we had someone we all felt great about. And Valerie is a Wellspring employee, but is here at the high school many days a week and is the coordinator for that program. So she's V. Rafferty at Gloucesterschools.com. I can send that to whoever I need to to get that out. But people who are interested can go right to Valerie. And there's, I will say, like, there's an application process, there's screening. Everyone, obviously, Cory, sorry, fingerprint. There's an orientation, as I said, which is next week. So it's a commitment, and mentors are committing to about an hour a week for a year and a half to two years. So this is, this program's been designed really to build relationships between successful people in the community who've found success in a whole variety of fields to inspire and coach and cheerlead and sit by the side of a high school student who just is tearing their hair out because they're not sure what they wanna do, or they know what they wanna do, but they don't know how to get there. And so Valerie will definitely be looking for mentors as this grows because there's a lot of demand on the student side. The counseling department is in charge of doing the referrals of students and making sure that they're supporting Valerie with the information that she needs to make the right matches.
So they're all set for now, is what you're saying?
I think they are, but I will check. I would never say no to a volunteer who wants to get involved. So I will email Valerie and check. I know my husband happens to be volunteering as a mentor, so I get the inside track on all of their schedules. I happen to know they have a training next week. And we have a board member whose husband is also doing that, so.
Appreciate it, great work, thank you.
I would just wrap or try to wrap it up by saying, I can't, I can't knight GEF now. Especially the two of you pretending. You are our, GEF is our central partner. And for so many reasons. One, you are a tremendous champion of our schools and our educators and our students. Our great work that is done, especially great work that GEF supports. You connect so many people to our schools to help them channel their desire to be connected, to support, to work with. You are a tremendous thought partner for us, for principals, for district leadership. And you also push us. You push us to be better, you push us to be more ambitious. And you always are pushing us to be, as you said here, to develop programming as actively engaged kids in really meaningful learning experiences. And that is what we want to happen every day in every student in every classroom. And fifteen years now, GEF has been just tried and true champions of that. So our deepest thanks.
Proud to do it. And I won't say anything because I see you right. I do wanna acknowledge and thank Kathy for bringing the school committee perspective to us, for being really engaged in the work that we do, for bringing her perspective as a parent. You bring it all. It adds a lot to the organization.
Well, I think this is a perfect forum to let the community know more about what the foundation is about as well as educators and dental school committees so that they can speak as enthusiastic and knowledgeable as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave.
Didn't want to be rude and pop up. No need.
So we'll move on to just where things stand as we launch MCAS this week. Just to give a committee update on schedule. This is sort of, this is the most basic piece of the schedule. You see, GHS, grade ten ELA started this week, last two days, yesterday and today. We moved into grade ten math in May, and then grade nine biology in June. And then grades two through eight ELA, that is not March twenty eighth, that's March twenty eighth. There's a window, the state gives us a window and when to administer those tests. Typically, we go later in the window, but it varies. Greg is a big supporter of this, I mean, not a big proponent of it, supporter of our school teams and administration.
April fifth.
There you go. Starting with that, so we're going across all those grades within that window. And then math is essentially the following month, April twenty fifth to May twenty seventh, knowledge engineering grades five and eight, it's not five through eight, five and eight. Is, that window's April, is really the month of May. So these are really demanding of school administration, teachers, all school community really. In terms of the focus on it, disruption to the schedule, the time, amount of time it takes for, you know. Any individual student, it's not a ton of time, but across the whole school has an impact on going back. Especially, you know, you see at the high school for those days, it's literally shifts the schedule for everybody. But it's, you know, pretty limited for a couple of days each month. Whereas the elementary and middle schools are a lot more intensive basically. So just want to, you folks know, that's part of the context of what folks are experiencing now, will be experiencing soon. And that always impacts just the normal routine. And anything that impacts the normal routine, especially something that, you know, is a exam like this. Really impacts the learning, impacts teachers, impacts students, it's sort of suffocating, impacts families, as some you know. So I wanted to just make sure everyone knew that was, that's underway basically.
Go ahead. No, you got it. Mike, so Greg or Ben. Was it, is it, is this the first year without the high school technology exam? Right? So it used to be, there were two science exams in the high school that kids could take to read the science. So if it's one of, if our students are not on the biology track, does that impact their graduation requirements from a state?
No, and I wish James were here to talk about the nuances of that. I'm afraid I don't know the details.
But it's, it's not detrimental.
No, it does not. No, I know that.
So I was going to ask, I'll be along with that a little bit. Through COVID, didn't they lax a little restrictions for the MCAS?
Not, not this year, we're all good.
Oh, so is that we back to regular MCAS?
Last year we had, the session lengths were reduced from three to two sessions. And we also were allowed to do a remote last year. So those were the two big differences. And of course, there wasn't the accountability directly attached to it. So we are back to full accountability.
So this year, there's no change. It's back to the original.
Back to the original format, length, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, right. So COVID update, continue to do our free at-home rapid tests. The virus, here's the latest, BioBite continues to go down. Two weeks ago, three weeks ago, we were at 180,000 samples per liter of wastewater. And now we're at 17,000, which was last Friday. Again, can use go down. But, but, which, and this is probably the most reliable indicator across the community. Because as I mentioned before, we now have sort of taking rapid tests, those aren't typically reported to the Department of Health, okay? Do a lot of reporting in our schools. Folks are good at letting us know, which is great. But only PCR tests have always, it's only been PCR tests that have been reported in the state. And those used to be the preponderance of tests and now less so. So we have to keep a really close eye on this. You see an uptick here. Two weeks ago, we were concerned about a, I'm sure with the right uptick at the high school. Among the small, certain group of students involved in this activity. That's resolved itself and we had kept close watch on it. I gave you a sort of update on what we're doing. We're doing a similar approach at veterans now in terms of knowing which classrooms are grades, contacting families, offering initial testing. And then the take-home mobile tests to test, you know, upcoming days. That's sort of something else, keeping a close eye on this. Yesterday, with the pool testing veterans, we got the results back there, there were no positives for the pool testing of veterans. That's a good sign. But there were a couple more positives for rapid tests today. So, so again, keep like we were doing with the high school two weeks ago, now keeping a very close eye on veterans. You know, people are talking about this new variant of Omicron that's out there and more contagious. So, you know, we're keeping a close eye. And we're doing just what I've been reporting, which is this week Jeff Parker reached out to DESI to ask about veterans. He's been sitting down, you know, both yesterday and today with the nurse, Karen over there. Understanding, you know, what grades and what classes, what information we can get from families about connections, okay? That sort of thing between students or staff. So that's it. That's the identified patterns and causes and then responding. And the responding at this point continues to be math busco communicated to veterans families yesterday. Encouraging mask wearing, make sure they know what the status is of COVID in the school. And then also communicating with families and providing more tests and that sort of thing. And where possible, suggesting to get them signed up for either or or both their pool testing, their rapid testing. And as well as giving them rapid tests if they're not participating now, so. And that, and I would expect we'll see that sort of process continue on. I know, I will say this, if you remember when we had the mass discussion for February break. I did highlight that a few weeks after February break last year, there was an uptick, okay? That's happened twice now. It's literally the same timeframe as a year ago. I'm not sure if that's a connection. It's just interesting, you know, to note that. After that, cases went down for the rest of the year. That is a pattern that follows. But we'll keep an eye on that.
So I'm looking at the bio report, it's really low. You look at the graph and we're on the bottom and Ben on the bottom.
Yeah.
So when I hear these words uptick, like uptick means five cases, not 50 cases, like it might have meant last year. I just, I just see a little.
Well, I'm specifically, for this, I'm specifically talking at veterans. When I say uptick, I mean veterans. You know, I mean, listen, we went from eight to 31 cases, you know, in two weeks, you know, that's an uptick, right?
Right.
But what I'm talking.
Because it went up.
Yeah, because it went up. Yeah, yeah. I don't say surge, I don't say spike. It's a word here, you know. Uptick, I'm not using it, you know, because I don't want to overstate it.
Right.
But it's, you know, as I'm being clear with folks, like, we're paying attention to veterans, you know, that's a concern.
No, I get that. So I guess my question is, trying to find the question. So knowing that COVID is with us forever, never going away. So we're always going to have this because it's like the flu. We always have the flu, we're always going to have COVID. That's a fact. That's out there. That's, that's the way of the world, right? I'm curious to know what DESI regulations are now. Like, are we still doing contact tracing? Are we at a point where, again, you can recommend a mask just because people are getting them? So anybody has COVID, I guess you would wear a mask around them. But I just want to make sure that we're not, what, the CDC isn't requiring masks, nobody's requiring masks. So I just kind of want to stay on that path and not get parents upset. But at the same time, report what's actually happening.
Yeah.
So what, what regulations does DESI have over this point? Like you're calling DESI, is there a certain benchmark where they say, put the mask on, shut the schools down still? Or are we, you know, contact tracing, all done with that? And it's just a matter of, okay, a couple of kids have it, you might want to wear a mask.
Yeah, so, so we called DESI in this sort of situation for two reasons. One, access from them to the Department of Public Health and Epidemiologists in case we need that. Okay, so the first two questions to DESI, to DESI's or our contact there is, anything else we should be doing? Report what we're doing, anything else we should be doing? And do you think it's worth either getting some state testing in here, okay? Or also talking epidemiologists. And that's where, and that's sort of, sort of like, that's what's happening. Any thought suggestions, what else to do really? In terms of any sort of regulations from DESI now, it's more, it's all encouragement, encouraging distancing as possible, okay? You know, and some classes do that, some classes don't, and you know, and they sort of vary. In terms of masks, that is still, whether it's COVID or other airborne diseases, masks help reduce that. Okay, they don't eliminate it, okay, but they help reduce that. It's commonly, as I described, it's commonly used in many other countries in terms of when folks are recovering from illness or have illness in their home. So we suggest that and that's still, we all, I think we will continue as we have COVID here. As a practice that families can choose if they want to. You know, and that's consistent with what folks decided and what we've been saying all along. It's not a mandate, it's a suggestion and it's a, you know, that families have.
So do you see this as a suggestion forever now?
Well, I know you mentioned flu. I don't think, you know, that COVID is where flu is yet. Especially because we've been here before and COVID, you know, did things differently, you know. So, and it certainly is, has been deadly with the flu. Don't know where it is now. So we, I think it's really proven for us to remain vigilant until there is more, more time. I mean, we're not far away from the most serious, you know, number of cases we've ever had. I mean, it's recent passes now, so. That's the difference, I think, is because we don't know where it's headed. You know, flu, I mean, again, I'm not a public health official, but flu is very consistent and has been for years, you know. In terms of what we expect, what happens, it's deadly as well, especially among older folks, as we know. But it's, it's a much more consistent, my, believe my thinking here, again, a public health official. It's a much more consistent disease that we're at, much more familiar.
I was just trying to gauge you to see if we're on a path where you're going to be recommending masks because there is a flu outbreak and things like that. Like, in other words, are you suggesting that recommending masks is going to be in the schools forever? Depending on the illnesses that are coming at us? I know we don't know enough about COVID right now. It hasn't been here long enough.
You know, I think, I don't know what's some of the lasting impacts of COVID of this pandemic been, you know. And one that certainly could be that in our society, people just have more of a common practice of wearing masks when they have illness or recovered from illness, you know. I don't know that, you know, but, but for the time being, especially this year, we'll continue to encourage folks as, you know, as an option for them.
Yeah.
If it's for their, their family.
Thank you.
Ben, quickly. Veterans, is, is the school that they're in St. Anne's, is that footprint smaller than the rest of the school? I mean, are those kids packed in more than at the other schools?
Not in the classrooms necessarily, you know, the classrooms are good, healthy size, I mean, you know, large size, I mean. You know, it's, it's, instead of, you know, you think about our elementary schools and what they, what they have been, like veterans, for example. You know, they're spread out on one floor across a bigger footprint than St. Anne's Anne's built up, obviously. The hallways definitely are tighter, that sort of thing. But if there was any, I think this is true, okay? You know, if there was any issue with the building, I think you would see veterans, you know, having trouble all year long. And they just haven't, they're no different than, in fact, maybe better off than some of the other schools. Honestly, yeah. Okay. Here you just see the number of cases, so 31 cases, that's comparable to where we are, or sort of, you know, late November, early December. Mentioned that already. So in-school vaccination clinics, not a lot of folks, 43 people total. They're in school vaccinated, but that's a combination of first shot, second shot, or the adults most likely are boosted, sort of thing. And then we're going to move on to the 2023 budget.
Just a quick question on testing. Have those numbers, the pool and the records, have those numbers been sort of stable?
Yeah, yeah, all, you checked the numbers today. In terms of the, in terms of registrations, it's pretty stable. Vaccination is stable definitely as well. This week, there were 831 swabs, so 830 individuals, you know, tested over Monday, Tuesday, sorry?
Staff and students?
Yeah, staff and students, that's right, staff and students. And there were five positives across all those. So of the 31 people you see that I just reported, five of those came from pool testing this week. That's a 0.6% positivity rate of those folks who were tested.
And we still have, so if it's about, we have about 50% involved in testing, that was where we were.
50% of students, yeah, involved in the rapid testing.
And what about the pool testing?
In pool testing, this number, 831, was negatively affected by the MCAS at the high school. Folks were in the middle of testing.
Right.
So I think we have about 1,000 people, you know, well, more than 1,000 people registered. It varies how many folks are tested each, you know, each week basically.
So basically, half of our.
No, probably about more like a third is probably tested each week in terms of pool testing.
So, but I'm saying as a district, we're somewhere around half of our students and staff being tested.
Yeah, if you, if you, if you, you know, I don't know what the Venn diagram is literally between rapid testing and pool testing. But I think somewhere around half is probably, perhaps, right? You know, you think 1,400, during the rapid, sorry, rapid testing on staff is over 440 folks at least, okay? Of 630, so we're above half on that.
Right, so.
Okay, in terms of students signed up, we're, I think we're at 1,400, I think, and that's half. So during the rapid testing, we're right around half, I'd say, if I remember correctly. And pool testing is about a third, so. I think that's, you know, if you look at both of those components.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, moving on to the budget. So a lot of this is similar to what folks, what the committee, full committee saw a few weeks ago. So, you know, the bottom line hasn't changed. The basic approach hasn't changed. Still working through some details, but, but the numbers are very comparable. So just, I'm going to give you an update first on the plan for ongoing improvement. Because as I've talked about, the budget's linked to that and always will be, okay? So I just want to give you a quick update on this, which is, I'll tie in later, I promise. The process to date, in terms of our plan for ongoing improvement, just a little background. September is when I present my entry plan to the committee and the public in schools. In October, and that began really, that kicked off the process for developing the plan for ongoing improvement. October, we have parent leader and intuitive stakeholder groups provide input on key priorities. November through March, I met with staff at each school. Typically, myself, Katie Provo and Greg Bach with support of Stephanie Leasing met with folks. We met with more than 120 staff across all the schools. And they shared input on the, on key priorities. We asked questions related, so there are, I'll give you one example. One question we asked across all schools was, actually two of them, was how can we best support students' social, emotional learning and mental health? Okay? The other one was, how can we better connect general education, special education? But then different grade levels or grade segments had some, some that are closely aligned to that particular grade level. I'm trying to think, we asked, one thing we asked at the preschool, and you'll hear more about this, is about the building. Okay, the school committee asked us in the fall to get information, input from the staff there about the buildings. That's one of the questions we asked them. A lot of good put on that. At the high school, it was tied to their, their sustainable improvement plan. So one of them was asking about, you know, how, how can we make sort of sustain a deeper, deeper hands-on learning happen more systematically in high school? That's a rephrasing of what I was on paper, but that's the, that's tied to a sustainable improvement plan. Whatever the topic was, we asked essentially three questions in this, which is, what are we doing now? That's strong, that we should continue or make stronger? What should we stop doing and what should we start doing? Okay, so whether the topic was a specification or the topic was about interventions, or the topic was about a building or the topic was related to social emotional support, those were the three questions asked about that topic. These happen after school, outside the school day, it was optional for staff, not wanting to require them to come to, you know, additional meetings. But it had some good turnout across the, across the schools. And one thing that was consistent across the schools was that the folks who were there were incredibly helpful, incredibly thoughtful. It just really, just helped move our thinking, you know, forward basically. Now the work, we've got five planning teams of staff taking input and identifying goals and initiatives and actions to take over the next few years. So they're taking all the input, they're taking the knowledge they have of the schools and district, you know. They're taking the input from our, from the staff groups. And they're looking at five different areas. And we've had 38 folks across those five teams, plus all the principals doing it. Yeah, and so, and that's, the school secretaries involved, ESPs are involved, coaches, psychologists, counselors, and also teachers as well. So really good across all schools represented. These are the planning teams, so you'll, these will strike you as familiar. Better connecting general education, special education, strengthening mental health support and social emotional learning. Strengthening the special education team processes, these are, really come from the priorities that Katie Provo explained to you folks during the budget process. Engaging students for deeper learning. So that's the idea of moving students from dependent, independent learners over the course of their career in school here. And then the last one is deepening the connection between students, families and school. So how do we really make sure that students want to come to school every day? Okay? And that last one I'm leading, and that's with our principals and leadership team are engaging in that. They're the sort of team that's focusing on that and had a great session with them this morning. So what folks are working on, and so there are some key questions or sub-areas in each of those. And then each team is using this template. And you can see that, so what's they're going to identify the goal and future state in that area? What are we heading towards in that area? They'll always will identify what's already in place, okay? As I've mentioned again. They'll always will identify what's already in place, okay, as I've mentioned again and again, we've got a strong foundation in these areas in our schools. We're not, we're not building from scratch. Key initiatives, those could be to continue, and most places we'll have initiatives, we're continuing, okay? We're doing some great things in a lot of these places, and some to start, we'll have measurements of success. And then, I think probably the most, not the most important piece, but actions for the next three years, okay? And really, really important that those actions, we do not want a list of fifteen actions in each area in each team, okay? That cannot be done reasonably, and I've mentioned this to you before, is we need to create a plan that's achievable, that's clear. And actually, you know, helps drive us forward rather than overwhelming us, or is easy to dismiss because it's it's on the list. So the idea is that, you know, and also new actions every year, there's plenty of things that need, you know, number of years to work on, work through. So that's the, that's how we're organizing it, and it's progress we're making so far. So that ties the budget, because after we get that in place, we're using some of that in the budget process this year. But it really will be very closely tied to the budget in upcoming years. So to jump in here, as we said before, guiding principles for FY twenty three budget development are, okay, the ongoing plan for ongoing improvement. Based on our priorities for student learning, student support, and high quality instruction. Moderation of financial prudence are a really big piece for us this year, as all of you know, improving improvement and retention of staff. And that's in a variety of ways, including increasing our salaries. And building a budget with an eye towards FY twenty five when federal relief funding ends, okay? So those are some of the key areas here. This is in terms of the process, so we completed the yellow, we're on the green, and we have those ones below the green to go. But what this speaks to is the many steps in the process, the power and nature of the process, beginning with our work with our school district leaders. And then working with the committee, the subcommittee, being a subcommittee, and now the full committee. And then, you know, looking towards the, tonight is the next step in terms of, you know, including the public as well. We do want to anticipate a budget that allows us to see more growth. And that always matters, and that matters when we're negotiating contracts, that matters when we're looking at ESAR funding, and we have now, and we'll have, won't have in a few years. And it's also about making sure that we're conscious of sort of very typical increases in costs we can expect every year, I'll go into those in a moment. And that, of course, all of that, we want to build budgets that support ongoing improvement, student student learnings, and construction engagement. We can't do that if we're lurching up, down, or sideways in our practice or in our budgets. So let me get to the financial section. So we're going to just go over a few of the key things that are the main drivers of changes in the budget, and really one of the changes is increases. And whether the increase in these impacts what we can do in other areas. And these are the places we anticipate and expect increases typically every year. So I mentioned earlier about salary adjustments to attract or retain staff. So we had a sort of similar approach across our labor negotiations, where it was trying to increase starting salaries. And then also make adjustments where necessary. So you see, this is for the GTA, the teachers, adjustments need to be made in athletic coaching and some stipends. We also wanted to prioritize increasing course reimbursements for areas of need, like during special education in English language learners. And then also wanted to make sure that folks could get to the top salary in a reasonable amount of time as well. Similar in terms of operations, support staff, we eliminated bottom steps and raised salaries significantly, particularly in areas like food service, paraprofessionals. Our school secretaries, that those areas, wanted to make sure that we're competitive with our districts, with our neighboring districts and our dark districts. So in terms of dollars, in terms of compensation, these are teacher compensation changes you see across various areas. Typically, there's retirement savings every year, so you see that included there. That helps us balance the other increases a fair bit. And that that's because folks retire at higher salary and typically replace them with folks who are younger in their career and therefore have salaries that are lower. Another area of of change in the budget, this is in addition, is we're taking our sort of ESAR positions as we described in really three, four key areas, and absorbing them onto the operating budget. Typically, we'd be, we could, in terms of these days, we could perhaps add some positions. We are not adding positions because they're here this year, but by putting them on the operating budget, we're making them, you know, more permanent, or more stable. And these are, okay, here, ones we talked about, and ones we've already seen significant, you know, real, you know, just little improvements from these folks and the great work they're doing. You heard from Amy Cam and how she's able, in her leadership position, to strengthen the support of our clinical staff, especially in this day and age. And I don't mean just pandemic, you know, we're, we're, in so many ways, our world has changed, especially for our young kids. Our students in terms of their needs and therefore social emotional learning skills, but also mental health support, so that's made a big improvement. And then also looking at some, our our kids who are most in need, just special education. Really having better coordination and support for our teachers at at the high school, but also improving coordination and support of of families and their students. Through better leadership and really more capacity in special education, high school. Adjustment counselor, certainly O'Malley is a place that that is just that age, especially this day and age. And they need to social media and all sorts of things, and the pandemic is challenging, it's a, it's a, it's a turbulent, I haven't been a middle school teacher myself, it's a turbulent time. And certainly, the new adjustment counselor at O'Malley isn't helping, sort of just, well, it just helps every day in supporting those students and large, large group of students. The transportation manager, as we've talked about before, really such an important role in terms of redundancy and support for our busing operation. Without that, the transportation director's job is, they're out there on an island. An island, when you think about, one of the, you know, driving in our world is one of the most dangerous things we do, you know. And so have safety and support and focus on training and really, really doing your great systems there has been a tremendous help. And we have a great team there now with the manager and director. Those are sort of the the biggest additions to budget, by absorbing the positions from ESAR to the operating, operating budget. Health insurance is always an area where things go up. And when you combine the employees and our retired employees, that's an increase of about five point eight percent this year. Sixty two of almost four thousand dollars. Our district tuition, another significant driver of increases in our costs. We're having some some adjustments there. Actually, our district tuition budget this year, because of circuit breaker aid and our prepaid tuition offset, we actually will have reduced overall costs for next year. That's because we're able to make investments this year, as well as having circuit breaker aid come in, come in at a higher level. Even though the costs go up, the the tuition goes up, the costs during FY twenty three are slightly lowered by ninety thousand dollars. So that's a, this is a summary of the significant adjustments, I've gone over most of them right now already, this sort of summary table. One thing you see here is, so we're shifting to ESAR, which is K to five math curriculum materials. So we're going through, as you remember, last year, did the Math in Focus update review. So those are sort of not one-time funds, but they're sort of limited funds that were put in ESAR for next year. And also providing instructional apps for those in math as well. So then sort of, sort of operational pieces, instructional pieces that could go in ESAR for a short period of time. And then here's the budget by department, hasn't changed, similar to what you saw earlier. Some of the increases are due to staff increases, which are, you know, affect different schools, just in terms of size of school, or, you know, you know, who works there. Framework development, you see that's a, that's a decrease of twenty seven or seven, twenty seven percent, that's the dollars we shifted to ESAR for a year. That's what that that amounts to. And then athletics, that increase there is due to, remember, as I said earlier, the increase in FX stipends. And that all amounts to, as we said, one point three five million dollar increase from last year in terms of our operating budget. A two point nine six percent increase, there's the summary right there. And then here's our per pupil, we have our dark districts on here and also our local districts, continue to be in the middle of this, which I think is the right place to be. Above the state average by a little bit, also I think a good place to be. And then here's sort of historical numbers in terms of where we've been, in terms of increases in the operating budget over the last eight years or so. You know, comparable to FY sixteen, little bit down FY eighteen, nineteen, and then some very comparable to what we, within a tenth of a percentage point over the last four years. So, so we like to be, that's a consistent area of stable, sustainable growth, we believe. This is what you'll be voting on tonight, which is, you know, really, it's it's this same chart here. Okay, this actually has the language of the vote. Before we get to that, I just want to make a connection to some of the things we're continuing to work on. Because we have ESAR, we have, you know, we have an ability to be a little more flexible with the budgeting right now, okay? And and the primary reason for that is by removing those four positions from ESAR to the operating budget has opened up some dollars, not only next year, but the year after. So it opens up dollars in ESAR, you know, for, in, you know, total, basically, to tune about eight hundred thousand dollars, because FY twenty three and FY twenty four. So we have more flexibility as we, you know, go through the budget process of identifying some things that we may be able to do or need to do. And I just want to talk about a few of those now, because they're sort of still a work, work in progress. This is what I shared with the building and finance last week. So I mentioned about our priorities and our guiding principles, they're on top here, so the first two to look at are building a budget with an eye towards FY twenty five and moderation of financial prudence. So this is really what I, what I just said about continuing to work through our various sources of funding, chapter seventy, funding from the state. Various federal grants and state grants, some of which continued to come to us with additions because of federal relief funds. So there's the ESAR funds, but then also the state got additional funds, went to the State Department of Education. And they develop grants or add funding to grants that we already have access to. So that's another way our 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 funding may vary or possibly increase some. And so those are areas that we can, we're still working on, basically, because they are changing flux, which is still different than normal. In fact, you'll actually see some increases tonight in one of your grant approvals. So in terms of what we're continuing to look at, is how do we support the O'Malley Sustainable Improvement Plan? They're going to be working, continue to work on, can they make schedule changes to potentially lower class size? Or areas of their math curriculum or their script room that we can do either through operating budget or through ESAR, that sort of thing. Operation support at GHS, and that's so the principal can really continue to lead and deepen his leadership on the Stable Improvement Plan, especially on the areas of instruction. This continues the work we've done with Amy Cam's position and Lisa Lewis's position. As so many folks have gotten up and said about just the leadership at the high school and having further support there. That also ties into the CBT director program as well, trying to build that team, so it's more of a team instead of, you know, just, you know, just a few, a few people. And if we can do that this year, if we can, if we can identify how to do this for next year. That really, I think, sort of completes some of the build out of having a really strong administrative team that sort of can can run all cylinders, rather than relying on heroic efforts from a few people. Which is really, I mean, it's happened because of the pandemic, but also, you know, it's built and structured in some degree, so that's a work in progress. And also something that we've been working on is, we talk about ELA curriculum again tonight, and what a big change. Really, next week, talking to all the teachers in in K to five, who work on English language arts, about that little significant change coming for them. So we're thinking hard about how do we get support across the schools to make sure that's done well. It's organization that's working very closely with Greg, because that is such a significant shift in the way folks, you know, teach, really. It's been, it's built on the foundation we've been working on, but it's a little shift, and it's not something that that we can afford. Nor can our students afford for us to do poorly. What I mean by that, doing poorly means we're not supporting our teachers well to do it. We're not giving them the time, or giving them instruction, or giving the, you know, time to work together, we're just telling them to go do it. If we did that, it would go very, it just would be bad effort on our part, and it would go, it'd make it much more difficult for them. So, and then we talk in structural technology, number of times, and how can additional federal grants in or ESAR support that, those areas, so. And then a few of these are just, you know, EL, when you look at EL support. Continue to look at nursing capacity at the high school, we will be continuing the increased capacity point six here at the high school that we were able to increase this year. And then shifts to preschool, that moves us toward more increased practice and fully program. So those are things that are in the works, and if we're able to do any of that through ESAR or other grants, will be some of the first folks to know. But tonight is really, I want to just give you that full picture. Tonight, though, it's just on the operating budget, those first slides I showed you, you've seen before. That where we have accounted for some of the changes, the ups and downs, and then this is ultimately that that budget, we also have that in effect. Let me pause there, thank you for your patience, and I'm happy to ask kids your questions with Gary's support.
Okay.
I was looking, I was looking over this, knowing that we're supposed to be in the new building for veterans combined with East Gloucester in Fall two thousand and three. Why are there separate lines for both those schools?
Because it's not happening till Fall twenty twenty.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, like, that's.
Twenty, yeah.
I mean, I see fiscal year twenty twenty three, so that doesn't start in the fall.
Oh, I'm sorry, so so the fiscal year for us being July first, I mean twenty two, it goes June thirtieth, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so.
So it's not the calendar year, the fiscal year again, sorry, is June first, sorry, July first, twenty twenty two. Basically, we're talking about here, this year, twenty twenty three, those July first, twenty twenty two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Okay, okay.
So it's six months and six months, yeah, so it's really the school year.
Follow up would be, I'm hoping we'll save money by combining those schools.
I hope so too.
Yeah.
Typically, we won't see savings in the first year, but that's, that's something we're actively working on. We're working on the integration of those two schools in a variety of ways, programmatically, looking at leadership, looking at staffing, that sort of stuff. Bring together two different cultures and two, and two different staff, okay? We're working very different ways for many years, okay? And and then obviously, the budget is a piece of that as well. So, yeah, that's ongoing work that we're already engaged in.
Okay, so my question, I don't really want to go backwards, but this just came to my mind, and I don't know if it's a conversation for a B and F meeting as opposed to here. So if I ask a question, you can't answer it, I understand.
Yeah.
So I read in the paper the other day about how KETA was able to operate on good gas prices because they had negotiated a good contract. And I'm wondering, I I just don't know the answer to this question, do the schools negotiate a contract for gas? And heating and things like that, and so are we taking into account that the price is going to be possibly higher going into next year? I mean, you might not have the answer to that, but it just dawned on me that.
I know, I don't have the answer to that, but Gary, fresh money.
And I'm looking at Gary, I want to see this, I transformed to him, and I'm just curious, have those, have you had any of those discussions? And do we have contracts?
We do have a.
Single price?
We do have a contract, and that is going to go up, and we budget it for next year.
I still remember having that conversation.
But we can get into the details at the next B and F.
Perfect.
You remember that?
Yeah, thank you.
Do we want to take care of the action now? From the B and F, from, oh, from this?
Yeah, so just to help new members, you vote on on these numbers, and then that's, that's what goes, that's what the public is essentially commenting on for the public hearing, which is scheduled for April thirteenth.
April thirteenth.
Thank you. And then this budget is printed in the newspaper, and and then also, I mean, obviously, the presentations that we've had are all available on our websites.
And if we approve it tonight. And if we approve it tonight, it goes into the paper tomorrow, is that it? No, March, uh, March thirty-first. March thirty-first, yeah. And we also put on display the budget book at the library, at the district office, and at City Hall, as well as on our website.
All the line items.
Yep.
And can I just, just following up, since we're in a public forum, so is our public hearing happening? And, I mean, what is the form of our public hearing?
Sure, the, the public hearing actually happens as part of a, of, this time, a regular scheduled school, school committee meeting, that's very common. But it'll be posted, I think separately, and, and so just the format, the format is, I'll give an abbreviated version of the presentation, and then, then it's essentially what, what we think of as open communication, but it's on a specific, on this topic.
So we're not going to be at City Hall, like, we're doing just this?
Yeah, it looks, for, for all intents and purposes, it looks just like this.
Okay.
Yeah. But advertised differently, and still
And information spread more, yeah, more thoroughly, yeah.
Okay. Someone would like to make a motion?
I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on the numbers that we're putting up.
Can you
Yes.
Can you see things like YouTube?
So we, are we just voting on this, posting this? Is that what the motion is, not the actual number? Because usually we do, we put the number in. We do put the number in?
Yeah.
So at our BNF meeting on March sixteenth, we reviewed everything that you saw tonight, and there was a motion that was presented and seconded to recommend to the full committee to approve the notice of public hearing on the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget for publication in the amount of forty-six million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. And I so move.
Please say, okay. Discussion? No questions, that confirms what we have experienced, that the process has brought everybody along in terms of details, and questions have been asked and answered along the way.
Very thorough presentations.
Yeah, very.
Administration.
Maria, can we have roll call though?
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Chairperson Glancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And Mr. Minion.
Yes. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Gary Frisch and Tony Marshall. Every couple of days or every week or so, I have a small freak out, and I talk to Gary, and I'm like, it's okay, we're doing fine. But that's because they have such a good eye on things, and they understand the budget inside and out, and are great operators. Kevin?
Yes.
Do you, or Ben, want to just, for the public, as they know, the next steps? This is for publication, public hearing, eventually comes back to the committee. I guess I'm explaining it now.
Yeah, so, so we are now at the point where we are required to have a public hearing in our budget. So this is our process of having our public hearing. The city council does a similar piece in June, Mayor June, they have their public hearing on all of their departmental budgets as well. So we're kind of ahead of them, because we need to do our budget prior to submitting it over to the, to the mayor's office. So we'll do the public hearing, we'll take input from the public. Some people show up to say, you know, keep going, you're doing great, and you support the budget. Other people may say, have you thought of this? Have you thought of that? So, so their opportunity is on April thirteenth to bring that feedback or those comments or questions to us. From there, we incorporate those comments into our thinking about the budget, right? We take that input. In the meantime, also, as the superintendent is looking through those other things that are on his list of future things, those decisions may flesh out to make a change into the budget we then incorporate. And, and so that goes through the BNF Subcommittee, and if there are changes to that budget, we make those. And then we do another vote to vote the official budget to send over to the mayor's office. And, and so we submit to the mayor's office. Sometimes that budget just gets blessed and sent on to the city council, sometimes the numbers differ. But we have made our case as to what we, we need, and then it goes to the city council. We do that as well.
Okay, I'm just, so people have an idea. So I'm going to be beginning, I think, in the next couple of weeks, working with all the department heads, and pretty intent, uh, when, so I can tell, what goes into cities by now, that will flow to the city council. I don't know if they publish their reviews, but they're going to have like day-long reviews, like eight-hour sessions. So stay tuned for that, and eventually they'll call and, you know, Ben to talk about your budget, our budget.
And then by the end of June, we build a formal budget for the following fiscal year. After the city council votes, we then, and then comes back when we vote it again, so that it comes officially.
Which always ends up to be the Wednesday of Fiesta, when we have Fiesta this year, so we're going to make that a quick meeting.
So right now, it's going to be the twenty-second.
That's the first time. That's the Wednesday of Fiesta. It's that way.
It's the fourth.
That's usually the black day too, right?
Yeah, that's
Now, that's Thursday.
Oh, that's Thursday.
That's two years, we haven't had Fiesta.
Yeah, that's
Ben might want to do that, he's a runner.
Which one?
It's a five K.
Yeah.
You can do it with Matt.
I'll run.
Matt does it every year.
Matt and I discussed running today, it's not going more for you, you're more of a runner. I can rally. And I hope you can too. Wait, when's that race?
Thursday.
That's Thursday, yeah.
Yeah.
So we can have an early meeting on, on the twenty-second of June. All those dates are in the calendar, I showed you. We have a budget central on the, on the, you know, budget operations part of our website, which we updated tomorrow with this presentation, all of it, all of it done. And then the calendar on that, that's the date, so.
Are these dates going to be on the GPS calendar?
Oh, I hadn't thought about that, but we certainly could. Gary, we, remember that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think some of the, you know, some of the ones are sort of, you know, firm. But, yeah, we can, I think it's good to where the public hearing should be.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. Yes, yes.
Entire calendar is a document you can search and find, but you're right, on the base of our calendars.
Right, can people refer to our calendar to look for what?
Okay. All right, we will move on to subcommittee reports. Oh, you want to make a motion to accept superintendent's report? So Great job.
Discussion. Okay, Maria, can we have roll call though?
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Chairperson Glancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And Mr. Minion.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we will move on to subcommittee reports, and the first report is by Melissa Prince from the Building and Finance Subcommittee meetings of March fifteenth and March sixteenth.
Thank you. So I'm going to continue right now with the, the meeting from the sixteenth, which was our BNF meeting. Everything we've been discussing now, just to stay on path. And to, I'm not going to give a report of that meeting, because it was basically what we saw and discussed tonight. But out of that meeting, there was two, two additional meeting, two additional motions, I believe. So I'm just going to, they're pretty self-explanatory.
I can also show those on the screen.
Okay, that would be great. So the first one is the resource officer.
Yep.
So as Ben's talked, putting that up there, as you know, we have a resource officer at the high school and one at O'Malley, and we do a class share with the city. So it was motion and second to recommend to the full committee to authorize CFO to request a special budgetary transfer of sixty thousand dollars to the Gloucester Police Department for funding of the Gloucester High School Resource Officer for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, and I so move.
Second.
So are there any questions?
So this is just a, it went up, this is a transfer, and this has been happening since, I think, two thousand fourteen?
Yes.
Two thousand fourteen? Where the, we, our budget, we reimburse the city for, for two things, and you're talking about both of them tonight. One of them is the second resource officer. So the city pays a salary, then we reimburse the city for that cost. And, and that's what this motion is, and then I'll talk about the second one.
And I just want a little bit of clarity, because I think it's the O'Malley Resource Officer, right? So I don't, I don't know that we should say the word Gloucester High School Resource Officer, because I think it's, the second one was the O'Malley one.
It's the other.
So I just don't want to link it to one and it be the other. So I guess I would just amend the motion to remove GHS.
You could just say, you could just say school resource officer.
Yes, school resource officer, exactly.
The BNF packet said it was GH, the GHS School Resource Officer, so that's why I put it in there.
Yeah, no, I hadn't seen that, yeah. But I just wanted to make sure as this goes forward from all of us, that we correct that, just to remove GHS so that it doesn't cause any confusion in case it, which is what I think, which is O'Malley Resource Officer. So I guess I did do a motion to amend, motion to remove GHS. I remember that. Okay. So we've already amended. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, Maria?
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Chairperson Glancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And Mr. Minion.
Yes.
Okay, so now we have the motion. Any discussion on that? Okay, Maria?
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Chairperson Glancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And Mr. Minion.
Yes.
Great. So the other motion, as Ben just announced too, it's, it was motioned and seconded by the BNF Committee to recommend to the full committee to authorize the CFO to request a special budgetary transfer of four hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars for the out-of-district tuition expenses to be paid through the school choice program. And I so move.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
And I just want to add that this, like Ben said, this is an annual reimbursement to the city, it happens every year, so it's not anything, you know. The money goes to the cherry sheet, I believe.
Right, and, and, and what this is, is that so we have students who, from other districts, or, I'm sorry, students for Gloucester residents, they choose to go to other districts, okay, it's a choice out of, out of Gloucester to a neighboring district, neighboring municipal district. During their time there, they are evaluated as a special education student, and then need to go out of district to a private, uh, no, no, private or public placement outside that district, for such a case placement. So it's, it's like, we've talked about our out-of-district tuition students, it's the same thing, but they are going from that, that neighboring district they've choice into, okay? The city gets charged for that, and then we reimburse the city for those, for those costs, and those costs are up here. You can see for the last four years, and the different schools or public school districts that, that were essentially paying tuition to. This amounts to seven students across these one, two, three, four, five districts or organizations that are, that are involved in this.
And as we discussed this motion, the frustration that we've had for many years was discussed, and I think Bill brought it up, that we don't have a decision in these expenses, this is students that go to other districts, and those districts are making the decisions for their, the programs that those kids are going into, and then they just build Gloucester. So until the law changes, which I know there was some discussion of it a few years back with HISTAR, it still remains the same, so we're obligated for these expenses for our good cause.
I have a question.
I'm just curious, because I haven't seen this name before, what is the scene collaborator?
It's, it's like the North Shore Consortium, just in a different location, with some different types of program.
Okay. Just interesting.
It's one of the regional, you know, collaboratives that provide a variety of different services, including special education services to, to local districts.
All right. No more questions? Maria, may I have a vote, please?
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Chairperson Glancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And Mr. Minion.
Yes.
And that was it for that meeting on the sixteenth, so I'm going to go back to the Building and Finance Subcommittee of March fifteenth, where we discussed the building use, policy procedures and costs. I sent you all an email, but I'm going to highlight who it, just for the sake of the public knowing what we did at that meeting. So at a meeting, which was attended by myself, Kathy, and Ben through Zoom, because they were going to the Grey Hoggie game, Bill and I stood, stood behind to keep the conversation going. We met with Mark Cole, who is the Assistant Director of Budget and Administration from the Department of Public Works to discuss the policies and the procedures, and we, we learned a lot, it was a good conversation, very informative. First, we learned from Maria that we have these books of all the rentals that we've done for the past couple of years, which is, is a great resource. As you know, the past two years with COVID, we probably haven't rented our facilities as much. But we do have those documents to review and get an idea for discussions going forward of what our actual building use used to look like, and it will probably look like, hopefully, coming back this year. The first topic we discussed was the finances and how it worked. And it was no surprise to learn that the account that collects the building fees is on the city side, it's not the school side. And I believe the city owner, Kenny Costa, manages that account. The schools receive no money from building rentals. The money is deposited into that account, and that account then funds costs for like utilities, repairs, maintenance, custodial fees, and supplies. So just to be clear, the schools do not benefit from any rentals, other than enjoying the pleasure of being able to give back to our community by using our buildings. The biggest expense for the building use is our custodial fees, and we, we have their contract and know what those salaries are as they go up each year. We had a conversation about utilities, the cost of heat, and other lighting and stuff like that, and, because I was curious to know if those costs were figured into what we charge, and we learned that they're not. Mark Cole did said he's going to look into some industry standards to find out, in case that is going to be part of our conversation going forward when we talk about costs. We learned that the heat during the cold weather months is turned down on the weekends, so we're not heating our buildings consistently through the winter. West Parish, I think, is the one school that is on a system, because it's a newer school, and I'm sure our new school will be the same when we get better in East Gloucester School, but the custodians usually turn the heat down on Fridays, and then go in on Monday morning early and try to heat back up. I, I'm asked about shoveling and snow conditions, wondering if during storms, if there's rentals, do we have to pay extra for the custodians to come out and shovel at a time when they normally wouldn't? And we learned that the city gets charged for the removal of snow by the inch of each storm, so it really doesn't matter how many times they shovel, because they would be doing the work anyway. So for anyone renting a property, it, it was learned that we do not have any expenses that are related to snowing and shoveling and plowing. Because as you know, the custodians are responsible for doing the work of shoveling the pathways. We also learned that our rental fees are pretty much outdated. We looked at, or Gary did some work, looking at about five, five different districts, and I pulled up some districts as well. And our costs are just not really comparable to other school districts, either in our dark communities, because we look there, and also our surrounding school districts, so we need to look at that. We also learned that costs for where and tier are not considered when we rent space. In regard to the custodians, as you know, we can't rent buildings without having a custodian in the building, so that's a requirement. Some schools, like this school that we're in now, do have custodians working during the night. So if there was a rental here, the custodians are already here, so there's not an extra charge for that. There are no set regulations or standards or processes in place to determine how many custodians are required for a rental. So in other words, if there was five hundred people, there's nothing that indicates right now how many custodians would be needed for that amount of people, is it one, is it two? Do they look at what type of function is, those type of conversations have not happened, so there's nothing in place at this time. Custodians are not required to work on weekends. If they do work, they get time and a half on Saturdays and double time on Sundays and holidays. Our custodians are not staffed on the weekends, so you have to, when we look at our costs, we have to take that into consideration when we tell the renter that they have to pay for custodians, we have to be sure that we inform them that the costs are higher on the weekends. The DPW made it clear that the custodians are not responsible for supervising our rented spaces, they're not babysitters, they're there in the building to set up, clean up, and if anybody needs anything during those rentals, sorry, I feel like a vest, you know?
That's okay.
That, they're there to address the needs of that, of that group. When there is a rental, the way that process works is the DPW puts out some sort of announcement, I don't know how they do it, maybe through email, that there's a job available, and then it becomes like a bid, custodians can react, if they want to work, let them Let them know, let whoever's managing the rental know. The head custodians get a first priority and it goes by seniority. So they have one of the most expensive custodians get the first bite of the apple per se when rentals are available. If for some reason nobody puts in for the job, there is a mechanism to put some pressure, as I would put it, on the least seniority custodian to come into the building, even though they're technically not required to work. A supervisor to a custodian is always available. In other words, if you have a junior custodian, there's someone available by phone in case that custodian has a question. So they wouldn't necessarily be in the building, but there's always availability to discuss an issue if needed. We learned that the summer days are the busiest for our custodians as they maintain, repair and prepare our schools for the opening in September. I was talking to them tonight before I came in here, and they would tell me how they strip the floors, they have to remove the furniture out of all the rooms, but that is their busiest time working in the schools as opposed to during the school year. In regard to rental applications, we learned that we have never, the school district has not had really a long term rental. The only one I can think of is our app school program by the YMCA that we've been doing for the past couple of years. I know that used to be our program and we weren't able to manage it, so we bought in the YMCA to help us. So that's probably the the most consistent, longest term rental that we have in our classes, in our schools. Classrooms are not typically rented. And I think Maria, who is the building use coordinator, we we gave her a new title because she's she's involved in all these rentals. So just so you know, you can add that to her job description and her and her salary over there. She did recall a long time ago, there was a classroom that was rented for a computer class for one day, but other than that, there doesn't appear to be a history at this time for renting our classrooms, and that's something I wanna dig into when I look at these books that we have stashed away for the past years. Just trying to glimpse through this. Classrooms are being utilized by staff over the summer. We do have school, summer school, we learned tonight that the Wasred Foundation has programs in our schools during the summer, so our classrooms are used for student-based interest over the summer. The DPW and Mark Cole did state that it would be easier for the DPW staff not to have summer rentals, which in turn would allow their staff full access to the buildings to prepare for school openings in the fall. So not only they do a cleaning, but if there's any repairs that needs to be done to the building, if they had to repair HVAC or a floor or whatever, they do it over the summertime, so they would like to be able to have free access to the building. Of course, while they're managing around our summer school programs, which is pretty active. I, we got into a conversation about quotas and it learned that we do not, at this time, have quotas for each, for capacity of each rooms, like in other words, how many, how many students can fit into the West Parish auditorium? We don't know that answer. Parking spaces, I asked Mark Cole if he could get us some information on parking spaces, and I'll give an example. Plum Cove only has twenty-five spaces, Eman has thirty-eight spaces, O'Malley obviously has a lot more, four hundred, High School has a lot more, West Parish has seventy-seven. So that's something to think about when we say we're gonna allow a rental for a large group, okay, where are they parking? Even though there's spaces designated lines, of course, we know there's ways to make other spaces, however, there is a concern for grass getting ruined. We don't want neighbors complaining, we don't want driveways blocked, things like that, so we're talking about quotas and we can get a lot of that information from the fire department as we make those decisions so that we know we do have the capacity when we say yes, we're gonna rent. Rentals that include playgrounds use are approved by the school, however, rentals that use the field are not approved by the school and approved by the DPW only. As far as the procedure, we learned the principal of each school is the first person to sign off on the rental request. It's unclear what that actual process is, but I'm sure we'll learn more as we have these conversations. Maria informed us that the school secretary emails the approved documents to her, she checks the calendar and then there's a conversation with Gary and then that process starts talking with the DPW. Mark Cole made it clear that the DPW is not an approver of the rental request, it is on the school side. So we're actually the decision maker and then we tell them that it's approved and then they try to figure out how to get a custodian, if they can get a custodian and so forth. It was reported that there's minimal discussions, upfront discussions, that we hope we can improve that communication in the process going forward. Unlike other communities, at this time, the school committee is not involved in any decision making with rentals, however, we've learned through many other policies, that school committee does make decisions on some types of rentals. Usually those rentals involve non-community based rentals, longer term rentals. Some communities have a a group that forms and involves like the superintendent, the DPW director and a city person that get together to discuss and approve long term rentals so that all the department heads are talking to each other and they make a decision going forward and then and other districts, the school committee is involved in that level once all the dynamics have been worked out. So we are going to have another meeting on April eleventh. We confirmed that today, it's a Monday. Ben did a good job on giving us a list of topics to discuss when we go into that meeting, to discuss the application and application fee like they have in some districts, the the actual process, how that will work from beginning to end to start, from request to final approval, the priority of uses. We're gonna talk about things like having liability insurance, I don't know that we do that now.
It's recommended, not required.
Recommended, required.
Yes, it's recommended now, it's not required.
It's not required.
Some places, some districts require.
Yeah, and I can tell you from being on the licensing board, we require liability insurance for all events, which is very easy to get, it's not something you sound like when you tell someone they have to go get liability insurance at first, they like, how do I do that, you know, it's a very simple process. And that way we would have insurance coverage for any damage or issues that happen so that the city's not liable for the costs, neither is the individual.
I'm I'm surprised about the liability, there's a checkbox on the form.
I know. I know, there's a lot of things we.
There's a checkbox on the form, so one would assume. So we're saying because it's not spelled out on the policy, yet it's on the form, it's not a requirement.
So.
I think that's a pretty great area.
I would say that the process, and and this is just from where we're at right now, being new, is it it needs to be developed more and it needs it needs more attention, right?
Yes.
So we we've learned a lot from this conversation, a lot.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have a good discussion and there's lots of room for improvement, right? But knowing that we haven't had a lot of rentals, this this really hasn't triggered this type of thing?
Yeah, I agree.
But now it has, right?
I agree, I mean, it's like twenty years ago, we did a policy and now we are twenty years later, with their it's obvious, maybe omissions or things that weren't clear, that it's time to review. Uh, one thing I would ask you to to make part of the discussion is because we've we've had a lot of experience with snow in the last few weeks.
With what?
With snow.
Snow.
So, because typically, like, we're a bit lucky that it's been snow like on a Friday, so we have the whole weekend to clear.
Yeah.
But if somebody's got something booked for a Friday, Saturday or Sunday, there's gonna be some disclaimers that say, you know, the DPW is not gonna rush to get there first, you know, to make, so we're gonna have these outs that are in there.
I would say that there's a couple of disclaimers that have to go on there that we we need to discuss and and not only that, but who's gonna tell who, when things happen, you know, so there's a lot of mechanics that need to be worked out and we really haven't had a reason to to review this because the majority, I would say from what I've heard from Maria and just being here for the past years, is the majority of our rentals are like PTO.
Yeah.
Sports groups, the Little League, you know, or Bill Melvin's involved with one, the, what is the, the, one of the sports teams?
Travel basketball.
Travel basketball, so the rentals that we've been doing, majority of them are student based, you know, even if it's not a Gloucester school program, they're still student based. They're community based and it's it's either a one day rental or it's a one season rental that happens regularly, you know, that happens in most schools, right? So now we're getting interest from other groups, which is forcing us to like, okay, wait a minute, what's going on here, you know? So this is gonna be an in-depth look at what our policy is, is it best practice? And we have plenty of policies to look at, you know, are the costs current, you're gonna say no. Are all our concerns addressed, I would say no, you know, you want the liability insurance, you wanna make sure that there's good communication between the DPW and the school before the approval is made to say, yes, there is a custodian available. Not, okay, we're approving it, find a custodian, you know, so those conversations, upfront conversations, I think should be worked into what we're doing. The the fact that the schools get nothing for the rentals and the money goes on the city side, which is okay, because you're paying you're you're fixing repairs and things like that, you know, where is the priority in the rentals? You know, if you have two groups that wanna use the new school gym at the same time, we have a beautiful basketball court, right? So if you have two groups that want it at the same time, how are we gonna prioritize that? Our policy doesn't address that, many other districts do tiers. In other words, if you're a community member, if you're a student based member, if you're a school, school access, you get first priority. You know, those are the kind of things we have to work out so that we don't get ourselves into a jam going forward. We are building beautiful schools, we're maintaining beautiful schools, we have labs, we have vocational programs. There's gonna be interest in using that space. The question is, how do we make sure that it stays safe and that the people are safe, you know, the school is safe, the school the school community is safe from the, you know, do you need security guards? We don't have that conversation here, they do in Cambridge, you know, so this just, I don't wanna take up all the time here, but there's a lot of work to be done. I would suggest, knowing that we're meeting on April eleven, that if anyone does have anything they want discussed by our group, to either email me or Bill or Kathy and we can incorporate that those conversations into our conversations so that when we come back here to this group with recommendations, it'll it'll address the concerns you have as opposed to dealing with them afterwards. Because I think there's a lot of work to be done here, I think we're eager to do the work, get it done, get a great policy procedure and costs out there, have a good relationship between DPW and the schools and come out in a in a good way. You know, we we know what our we know what our responsibilities are to whoever requests a rental, and you can't refuse a rental based on who they are, because that seems to be the topic of the conversation lately through the emails that we're getting. So we know where we stand legally with that, but how we do rentals clearly needs to be addressed for all for all parties, DPW, the renter, the schools, the school committee feel secure that we're doing the right thing by opening our doors to the public, knowing we're getting nothing for doing it. And I just can't express that, nothing, because I was just surprised by it, you know. It just makes you look at what is the benefits here, you know, so it's it's the feeling good of knowing taxpayers of Gloucester are paying for our buildings, how do we keep them in a good way but share what we have at the same time with our community?
When we originally adopted it, we did, we, the school department got the money because, as you know, because you're on the school.
Custodians, yeah.
We flipped it to the city side. But, yeah, so twenty years, it's time for a page one report.
Yeah. And I do have some, I I didn't need to bring it up tonight, but I, there's gonna be some legal questions that come up out of that too, and I would just hope that through our discussion, we can, through Ben or whatever, reach out to Naomi and Greg and just get some legal questions asked too as we come forward with a more robust policy that has good language in it that can try to have the foreseeable future to know all the issues that could come at us. Like I said, especially knowing that we're gonna have new school buildings, and West Parish is beautiful, this new school, I ride by it every day, is gonna be gorgeous. You know, people are hearing about great things, labs that are going on at O'Malley and here, the vocational program, we have a grant for that tonight, which is like a building rental. There's gonna be people in our schools, we're just gonna make sure that we do it right. And that was my report. Let's stop it for tonight.
Okay. Next, we have program subcommittee with Laura Weason.
Yes. So we we met on March seventeenth for our second meeting with Attendance Works. Joining attendance was our program subcommittee, Greg, Amy Cam, and I had two all worthwhile attendance books, researchers and helpers. So this meeting was really for for them to get us up to date on the new DESI guidelines related to attendance and then start to give us their recommendations, so it, there's a lot of, there's a lot there. I will go through, I know this was sent to everyone, but I want the public to know about this, again, we started with the fact that chronic absence is ten percent, missing ten percent of your days of school, so eighteen days for any reason. And this is critical because throughout these recommendations, there is a this is not truancy, this is excused absences are counted as part of chronic absenteeism. And you'll see throughout these recommendations that there's really a move both by DESI and recommended by Attendance Works to move away from punitive punishment for missing school and how to engage and bring students and families back into the school. So I'll just go through, the number one, the first recommendation was to utilize DESI reporting guidance to define presence and absence. So that's just how much school you have to be present for, for that to be counted as a day. Secondly, is to use the definition for chronic absence, which is eighteen school days, you know, ten percent of the school days. Recommendation three, they describe a tiered system of supports and interventions for attendance, similar to what we do for tier one, tier two, so just to read tier three for academic work. So that's starting with a foundational whole school support and then sort of, you know, following, following, following up if students miss school. Recommendation four was to revise revise the absentee notification process to support early intervention and personalized outreach. So this this is complicated, this is about students and families really being contacted by a person, right, not a robocall. Early in the process and start building relationships around this, and it's, all of this is more complicated and you'll tell me, Greg, if I'm missing some major thing, but it's, this is very much a summary. This whole process is about engaging and creating relationships, so this is a place for that. And part of this is letting families know that even excused absences count. And not only do they count, they they, there's data that shows that the more, there's more school you miss, the worse your outcomes are, and that's part of how we're gonna, how they want to share this information with families. Recommendation number five is including the roles and responsibilities of district and school level teams. So again, having sort of organized teams in the schools who are based on attendance, not just not just sort of one person whose job is attendance. Recommendation number six, deemphasize punitive sanctions for truancy. And again, this is the theme of much of this, is how to engage and encourage kids to go to school and not to sort of lead to a punishment and a sense of hopelessness around school. Recommendation seven, which requires a lot more conversation on our next meeting, is eliminating the attendance failure policy. So currently at GHS, if you miss, if you miss a certain number of days, you fail that class regardless of what your schoolwork says. And I I felt Attendance Works makes a very powerful case as to why that doesn't lead kids to reengage, but instead to just drop out. Recommendation eight was to adopt DESI dropout guidance. And among other things, I I thought was really interesting was that to really have an exit interview with students, really understand what's happening for them and to try, and and the goal is really to try to reengage or to offer other paths and not just to like remove kids from the system when they decide to drop out. I know that's a fine, but.
No, it's a great summary, I just want to point out on number seven that over the last year and a half, or almost two years, the attendance failure has been modified for COVID. And so students are not, that's not, not applicable during the pandemic, but it was prior and the discussion about whether it will continue.
So can I just? Something that I would like to know more about is, you know, we as a district and I think sort of as a culture are sort of moving towards staying home more when we are, right? And so that doesn't mean that we're necessarily in a pandemic, but I think parents are keeping kids home for things that they might not necessarily look like they're home for in the past. And so, you know, how does that sort of translate as we sort of move forward post pandemic? I mean, I know my my daughter missed, I did school because of the cough, because I don't wanna send her to school with a cough, you know what I mean? So it's like, there's, I think there's.
The, I I think it's very important to keep. But the, I, I think it's very important to keep in mind that, that it takes a lot of days to get to chronic, which is eighteen in a year.
Yep.
So if you are going to be, um, exercising that caution as a parent, which is totally understandable, um, I think the message is that you can't also take days to go to, you know, Disney World, you can't take days to go here or there, like, some, something has to give, you can't do it all.
Sure.
But eighteen is a lot of days, um, and we have a lot, a lot of students
Yeah.
who miss more than eighteen days. So that, in my opinion, goes far beyond missing five to eight days a year for, uh, for health reasons, which we might not have done previously.
Sure.
But there's a, there's a pretty big allowance for those kinds of things, and we're far, far exceeding any kind of reasonable, uh, cautionary health attendance.
That's helpful, thank you.
So, I remember having this conversation when we created this policy years ago, because I remember being frustrated by the whole thing. Um, Mass General Law states that kids can miss seven days in a six-month period. So that probably amounts to about ten days per a school year, um, otherwise as consequences. I believe there's like a twenty-five dollar fine. But my question is, so I, we, is Attendance Works suggesting that we go with eighteen days? And if, uh, because that's what I'm hearing, that eighteen days? And if so, how does that work with the child-requiring assistance truancy um, regulations that are there as well? Where you have to report to the court if a child is truant, missing so many days, what guidelines are they gonna go by? So, not that I'm against, I'm, I'm in favor of hearing about this non-punishment, that's where I want to go, and that's where I wanted to go years ago. Um, but I'm just wondering how does that conflict with the laws and requirements that we currently have? Was that discussed or not yet?
Well, I mean, this, DESI just came out with new guidance, so like, this is March twenty-twenty-two guidance, but they're now, my sense was that their guidance, their new guidance really meshed with Attendance Works research and the data. I mean, I, you know, I don't know, but they're presenting stuff to us that's from that. I'm looking at some of this where they are talking about Massachusetts law and requirements, but I don't know about this seven-day, do you want to change it, or?
No, I think what's important to understand that, um, it will be, and, uh, in compliance with all, uh, legal requirements. The chronic absenteeism, it's really important to understand that, um, that there's no Mass General Law around chronic absenteeism, uh, per se. That's DESI. DESI calculates, um, the impact of absenteeism and uses chronic absenteeism as a, um, as a, uh, an accountability standard. So we are, um, we are measured by, uh, our, our levels of chronic absenteeism, which is the ten percent of the school year. And we also, I've shared this before, but that chronic absenteeism, of course, has a, uh, I think, a pretty strong impact on performance as well, so it's a, it's a double hit. So if somebody's out a lot, they might have lower scores, and then we also get dinged for the actual absenteeism rate itself. So the chronic absenteeism is unrelated to Mass General Law and those dates. Those don't disappear, we still have to provide the notice, we still have to do the, um, appropriate C R As. But what we're talking about is, um, really identifying the impact of the number of days missed. And I believe that Mass General Law, unless I'm mistaken, there's about as, um, as a language around consecutive days, too, I think. I don't, I'm not sure it's a total like that, it may be right, but, um, we're really focusing on the impact of the, the chronic absenteeism.
First of all, did you get through your talking, or you don't want some more talking?
Most of it, uh, most of it, I mean, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just was thinking that, uh, I, I saw it as, when we discussed chronic absenteeism, I almost started, this is the definition, you know, this is kind of how we're defining it. And saying, well, there's no laws around that, but here's the number, and, uh, that's the, that's the target. Anything above that, you're in trouble, so. And, and the other thing that I think is important to remember is, uh, that we talked about a little bit was, uh, the messaging, you know, the messaging coming from schools and from community about absenteeism, I thought was really important. And also, uh, just the data behind that, and can we, oh, I know what it was, taking maybe steps with this process. It's such a large problem, not only in Gloucester, but nationwide, that we don't need, we don't need to hit ten targets up in the sky right off the bat. If we hit one target over the next couple of years, the next year, whether that be looking at it at the kindergarten level, or whatever we decide is the right way to go about that, then, um, that's at least a step in the right direction, I think. I think the idea, the problem is people get like, all worked up about it, oh, you know, this is, this is huge, how are we gonna tackle this? Well, if we take it just a small step at a time, I think, I think we'd be in pretty good shape.
Um, I, I thank you for, for mentioning it, one for the, the great overview, but also that key point, because I think I shared the other night that, um, it feels overwhelming to me until I think about where can we concentrate our, our efforts uh, at the, in a group that is gonna have a lot of change, make a lot of change. And I think, uh, kindergarten, it, I think that's the spot, because early habits are often lasting habits, and those are habits that our students, um, need to, um, demonstrate. But also, those are habits that our families need to, um, learn and practice, and I think that just goes together, carry them well throughout their, their years. I, I would love to see us concentrate on manageable and also phase in. You know, we want to get here in five years, and we're starting with these changes. Too many changes to the system is also gonna be very tough on the workers.
So the last thing, this is just relevant to the top, just because we don't have a next meeting scheduled. Um, I saw your email, so it looks like it won't be till May, right? Because that's last week in April that we tried to do it. So, um, we, we do have a little bit of a time crunch.
Yep.
Because, um, the goal is to have a meeting, adopt policy, or vote on policy, and then of course bring policy here. And, and, uh, anyway, so just to identify.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of a time crunch.
So I'm curious, and it might not be the night, but to hear how, um, of course, I can't tell how happy I am to hear this conversation, because I remember how frustrated I was when we were talking about the punishment before. I mean, in the years we've been on the committee, we've gone, we talked about the, I hate even bringing this up, but the punishment of kids not paying for their lunch, eating different lunch, and how we've morphed into a much better, um, system that, that is not punishable. And, and this attendance, I think, is another one where we have a lot of work to do, because we were talking about, you know, kids can't play sports, they can't do this, they can't do that if they're not attending school. And while I can understand that you want to hold somebody accountable and, and get set that bar, at the same time, for the kid that is not coming to school, I've learned personally that they're, they're not engaged, and they, they don't feel a reason to come to school, so how do we get them here? And punishing them only confirms on staying home. You can't get them to school if they're gonna be punished for it. But at the same time, you gotta hold them accountable. But I'm very interested to hear on how we can morph into a system that, that makes the kids want to come back. So, okay, we recognize that you've been out four days, because you, no matter how hard your mother tries, you're not going to school. But what is the school doing to say, come back here, let me, let me help you come back, as opposed to saying, well, when you come back, you're not playing your, your basketball, and you're not going to recess, or whatever they do for punishment? So I can't wait to see that sort of transition, because I learned from experience that I think that's gonna make a huge difference, especially at the, um, O'Malley School level and the high school level.
There was, um, talk about, uh, recommending, uh, specific, uh, employees of the school system, be it a, like a, like a close teacher to the individual student, or even like a janitor, or maybe a coach or something, someone with a personal connection, try to like, you know, bridge that gap, and, and maybe even make a home visit. Uh, so that was one of the suggestions that I think, you know, rather than doing a punitive thing, try to do an outreach and connection kind of thing.
So I listened in on the meeting, and I found, um, the whole direction, the whole approach from the consultants and everything. I mean, I know our attendance policy, when we were discussing it the last time, was rooted in the fact that kids need to be in school to learn, right? We want kids at school, we want them to know it's important to be there to learn. Unfortunately, our policy did not necessarily, um, well, it didn't, it, it wasn't all about the positive things. I do think the messaging to families about being tardy and about being absent, at least at the elementary school, was very much, your kids need to be here to learn. Um, but in terms of the supports, to, to draw them back in was not necessarily, you know, in place, and is probably not in place, um, very much right now. So, and I know with, with the current policy, it's excused versus unexcused, and people are freaked about one versus the other. And I like that this focus is totally on presence, not on why you are out. Um, I know years ago, we talked about families missing MCATs because they were on vacation, right? And we're like, oh my God, they took a second vacation this year, and it kills the attendance. No, we want to talk about being present to learn. So I think, um, I think even that's probably why it's an accountability thing for DESI is, they want to know that our schools are engaging, and that our kids are supported. And one of those pieces of evidence is how many kids, you know, have regular, good attendance. So I'm excited about, about the whole reframing of this.
So are we worried about, um, the timing of the policy to get into the handbooks and stuff like that? Well, they, Greg, again, correct me, but my understanding is you want to start training people, and like, get in the handbooks and start training, you know, staff to enact whatever our policy is from the beginning.
I, I think we need to be mindful that we are still in, um, a pandemic, and that we can't just plan on turning the switch and doing everything next year. So I think, first of all, there's the late, the, the, the lateness and the policy piece, but we, that's, that's about getting them into the handbooks. It is unlikely that this is gonna be ready by the time the handbook comes up for approval, and it may be something that has to be, uh, you know, looked at at a, at a later meeting as a single item. Um, since we don't go to printing press anymore for handbooks, that's something that, um, is more doable to, to add in during the summer.
And in the meantime, we're still in COVID-relaxing mode still, because they're having to clear the pandemic over.
Right, right. I didn't know that COVID was relaxing, that's a double relax, but they have given me. But there are some pieces that we are going to want to identify to put you in place, and I see one of those, um, that is very actionable is, you know, starting with incoming kindergarten, um, uh, parents and students, because that doesn't get as tangled up in the, uh, course credit, credit failure, course, you know, uh, attendance failure. I mean, these are, there are things that we can do without, you know, uh, getting caught up in some of the heavier duty pieces that are at the higher grades. So we can get started, um, yeah.
Yeah, but what's happened in this year? Like, so we have that failing of class, if you miss so much at the high school, is that happening now? Are we, or are we relaxed in the way we're counting attendance?
That's been, uh, relaxed, yeah. Um, and I, the only other thing I want to point out is there, the, the connecting to students, the positive supports, those kinds of things are happening in, in all of our schools with a lot of our staff. And so I, I don't want to give the impression that we are not doing a lot of the things. What we are, what have not done is we haven't outlined it as policy. We haven't been intentional about saying, this is what we're gonna do all the time. We want you to know it, and we want to have it in the, on the sort of front page. And we, we still do a lot of this work. So a lot of, you know, a lot of it is about, you know, putting it on paper and, and, and living by it all the time. But there's a lot of great work happening, for sure.
And, and, and all the time with every student.
All the time with every student, because it, it, you know, every student and, and every family, you know?
And that's when we have, uh, chronic absentee straits at this level, isn't every student. And it needs, and people need to know, everybody needs to know that, that the types of connections that students benefit from, all students benefit from those connections. Um, and we have to make, um, a concerted effort to make sure that, every student can find a real connection to the school, so they, they have a reason to come every day. Um, and right now, it's fair to say, no, again, it's, it's, I try to be honest, you know, not, 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 um, not, not negative, that doesn't happen to every student. We understand it, so we're, you know, with your support, make, need to, make a renewed effort to make sure that, that everybody knows that, we have that.
And through our budget, it's huge. And, but I would say, uh, like, drove by the Kate bus that has the everyday matters hanging on the side. And, um, I think the more, you know, I know we've talked that, you know, school being valuable and what the community really values for our kids, the more it's a community message. You know, it'd be kind of cool to have across Ro- Rogers Street, you know, um, for a month in September. Um, so things like that, because I know you can get approval if you put one of those big banners by the St. James' Square. Um, but, you know, those are ways to kind of elevate the messaging, like, we're excited, please. Our schools are good, please come to school, we want you at school.
And we have a great opportunity now, because I think everyone missed, I mean, like, for, you know, for all of us when there wasn't school, I think the importance of school became that much more obvious for everything, for relationships, and for socializing, and for, you know, just all of that. I think we're at this moment where people really know that deeply in a way that they didn't when we were all in school every day.
Guys, so just as we're sort of thinking of like how to spread the message, and I know that conversation won't continue, but, um, thinking about starting in kindergarten, right? Like, I, sometimes I think our best messengers are our students, right? And so like, we have, we have our students sort of talk to, or do a video to our kindergarteners, saying like, this is what happens when you miss school, this is what you'll miss. You know, I, I know my daughter misses school, she's like, then I'm gonna miss this, and then I'm gonna miss this, and then I'm gonna miss this. You know, there was like a list of things that she's gonna miss. Um, and so that to be, would be really powerful, I think, is to have our students really stand up and say like, it's fun to be here, and, you know, come to school, because if you don't, you'll miss all these wonderful things, so.
See, Matt, let's go video.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, all the videos.
I call that a hundred day.
We're, we're, we're working on a lot of that, school videos, C twenty-three, so.
I see a sign on our car.
On all of ours.
On City Hall.
Anyway.
Excellent report, excellent work, very important work, yes. Great, thank you for tackling this, I know it's gonna end up.
Thank you to Amy Cam, who was there, thank you, listening, yeah.
Okay, uh, all right, we have, to continue, we, the next item, um, so we've dealt with two of the, three of the action items. So, um, the next is acceptance of grants, and we have, um, two, three, four, five, six, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education grants. They all seem to be adjustments.
They're minor adjustments.
Minor adjustments, so without objection, do we want to have a motion to take these all together?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna make the motion to accept the grants.
So.
Okay, um, and we all have them in our packet, the public can see them in our, our, um, agenda. So Maria, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Ma'am Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yeah.
Jefferson, Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And Mr. Minion.
Yes.
And the next grant is the Essex County Community Foundation Grant to Gloucester High School in the amount of sixty-one thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents. Someone.
Second.
Someone wants to probably give a little more detail on that.
Sure, this is the second, second year, right, of the event, of us working with the North Shore Workforce Development, um, and, and, and support our city to do, um, workforce training, advancement and backstraining with adults during the summertime. Um, it's a, it's a big success last year. Um, uh, it's something that's supported by the Mass Hire, it's. It's something that's supported by Mass Hire, it's also supported by Mayor's Office, both last year and this year. It, I think, went very well last year. One apropos to that's conversation, I checked in with Principal Cook today. And this is being done, it's done during the summertime from June until August, done during the regular hours of a building when their custodians on, already here and off, are working. So we're not hiring any of the folks, but then we'll be staffing here and that sort of thing. They use the advanced manufacturing facility and then the classroom that's joining it. And that's, that's all, that's all the space they use. And we're really pleased to be able to partner with organizations, support adults in, you know, training or retraining them. And then by by doing that, be, you know, good to remember as well.
And I don't really remember, but I can only assume that was updated for the half a million dollar grant not that long ago, that whole facility. So I would assume that Grant probably had a little eye towards adult education and maximizing that equipment.
I assume, I wasn't aware, but it would certainly make cause, and that was, could not be known without this more.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Graham, can we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And Mr. Minia.
Yes.
The next item of action is approval to continue interdistrict school choice policy filed JFBB. Just premises every year, if you choose not to accept students from other districts, you have to vote to do so. Absent a vote, it's assumed that you are accepting kids, but we have historically made it very clear that we take the vote that we participate in interdistrict school choice. So it's just either one much better first, I believe. So do we have a motion?
So, second.
Any questions?
Another question, but for the people who may have questioned, we don't have a choice to not let our students go.
We do not.
Just so, because I remember, you know, I go through this many times, I guess, but just so people out there, if they're wondering.
We would love to have every Gloucester child come to Gloucester's school.
But everything we talked about today is to make that an easier task.
Right. Exactly.
Correct. That is our, that is one of our primary goals. But there, as you said, this is to allow us to accept students.
And we would love to have other students come, particularly when we have our vocational programs that our schools don't have. We have fabulous programs all throughout the school.
Yeah, robotics and engineering is a great program to option.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And Mr. Minia.
Yes.
Thank you, Karen, seen unanimously. The last item of business is approval of the nurse's contract effective September first, two thousand twenty-one to August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. I'll turn it over to Sam Watson.
Um, so in your packet, you'll see the tentative agreement between Massachusetts Nurses Association and the Gloucester School Committee. We met on March fourteenth. And per our executive session and the guidance from the full committee, we we took firm on our final offer and we were successful in coming to an agreement. So with, out. Does anybody have any questions on what's in the packet? A motion tonight?
Good question, maybe, I will, maybe it's a simple answer, I hope it is, but with these, what were those days, the 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 personal days, I think they were, the two that were added on, right? If they don't use them, they get paid for them anyway, so essentially they're getting paid twice. Like, say, like, you know, they they never took a day off, but they worked, they got paid, plus they get paid. Am I understanding that? You know what I mean, like, they never took a day off.
Sure. So, so we, it it's, we, in other units, we've given extra personal days, right? And there was a request. So I guess I want to preface this first, because if it's something that you're not going to agree with, we need to schedule an executive session. We kind of did this, this proposal a little bit different.
I just.
So are you just curious about how it would work as opposed to opposing it? Because that, we need to be clear on that.
Just for clarification, like, like, is that what's happening?
Yeah, so a lot of times we get, if you don't mind, I don't want to set money to, a lot of times we get proposals, and in this situation, we did, they wanted to, they wanted more personal days every year. Most groups have three, we have one group that works year round, that gets four.
Yeah, remember that.
So when they ask for more, we have to consider that, right? So in this situation, knowing that nurses work extremely hard, nurses, we did not have substitutes. So if they wanted to take a day off, most of them came to work anyway because there wasn't a substitute to fill in for them, right? So they were exhausted, they are working to capacity, they probably didn't take a lot of their time off that they're entitled to or some of the time they're entitled to because they just couldn't because there's no one to fill in. And they are very responsible and obligated to their responsibilities, so they just didn't. So recognizing all that, we gave them the ability for this year only, knowing they didn't get to take the time. They did ask for more personal time, but this was kind of a way of recognizing their hard work, that they were dedicated to their responsibilities. So two of the days off, yes, they're, they're going to get financing for that, because they can't take the time off.
Right, or less, kind of backdoor bonus.
I don't know that I would use that word, backdoor.
I mean.
But, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
I mean, that, that's what we decided to give them this year. I mean, each group, we give, we do something a little bit different in each group because we can't treat everybody the same way because their job responsibilities are different, their working conditions are different, their responsibilities are different. So in this, in this negotiation rounds, we knew that this year was a tough one. The teachers were very successful in getting some, some ass from their group. And this was something that was important to them to get more personal time. So that's what we decided.
Yeah, yeah, I would get some questions.
Yeah.
You're also welcome to take time off, too.
Right.
Right.
Which is really what they want to do. Yeah, and we do have, we have, we do have one right now this year. We don't know that we'll have it next year.
Right.
But we know we have it right now. So that's why, one of the reasons why we took this year only.
Yeah.
Trust me, they want to be on our speech somewhere or a day off as opposed to in school, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well deserved. But that's not for next year, it's just this year only. And I think Sam's going to read into the.
Yeah, when we add to the motion, I'll read the whole. So do we have a motion to accept? Um.
To approve.
To, yeah.
To approve it.
To approve it. Sorry. That's okay. Or should I, I'm just going to say the dates, though. For, to be in effect September first, twenty twenty-one to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Ms. Prince.
Yes, I thought you were going to read the, the terms of discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's okay. I take that back. Not changing mine. I said, yes, all right, so. All right, so the compensation proposal, so FY twenty-two, there'll be an increase of two point two five percent. And we're going to add step thirteen at two percent for both BA and MA levels. FY twenty-three, an increase of two point two five percent, we'll drop the first step for both BA and MA levels and add one percent to step thirteen for both BA and MA. And then FY twenty-four is a two point five percent increase, drop the first step for both BA and MA. And add one percent to step thirteen, resulting in a top second increase of four percent, step twelve for both BA and MA. So the personal days for FY twenty-two, nurses would be entitled to two additional personal days. If a nurse could not take those personal days for any reason or because a substitute wasn't available, then those two days would be paid as time at that nurse's daily rate. A nurse who serves ninety days or more in any step shall move to the next step on nine one of each subsequent year. Upon initial employment in the Gloucester Public Schools, nurses will receive full credit for every one year of relevant experience in nursing and or school nurse work up to a maximum of seven five. Through fiscal year twenty twenty-three, if there are COVID regulate, related regulations or mandates instituted by the State Department of Public Health or DESI that are served by the form, then five dollar per hour increase for hours thirty-six to forty will be implemented. And then substitute pay increases to twenty seven dollars per hour. And the contract shall be in effect September first, twenty twenty-one to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Questions?
So just to add to the discussion, for Keith and Bill, I'm sure you probably may recognize us already. So we, we have been pretty consistent over the past couple of years trying to keep nurses in parity with the GTA. So this salary increase is equivalent to what we gave the GTA. Rather than taking off the top, the first step and adding steps to the bottom is consistent with what we do in the GTA. So helps us in the hiring process, bringing in nurses at a higher pay rate, yeah, and retention. So just one of those who didn't realize that, or the public, if they're listening, that it's pretty equivalent to what the GTA requested and approved.
Discussion, okay, Graham, may we vote?
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And Mr. Minia.
Yes.
That concludes the action. The next item is this Gloucester Veterans Memorial School update.
So a couple of things on that.
Huge.
That's still, still, so, so they're done with the still, Building A, which is on the academic wing. And they are working very quickly on Building B, which is the leadership offices, cafeteria, gymnasium, and a field of, you know,
art.
or music, thank you, spaces. We are gearing up for the topping off ceremony, which is April thirteenth, hoping that, it knows that round, April?
Friday.
April eighth, Friday, April eighth, sorry.
Oh.
Friday, April eighth. Thank you. We're hoping that Kathy and the mayor will make up some brief remarks there. And we started that process because we brought together the veterans and Gloucester staff on Tuesday afternoon to come over to building site and see it instead of getting a tour of the outside and looking at the field. And they sign, or they first assign beam, both staff, and I I do as well, sign the beam. It's a, it's a white beam, it'll be the last beam that's put into place. And then today, or maybe tomorrow, I think it's tomorrow, the student nominations committee for the naming is going to go over there. They're going to film a video about the nomination process or the naming process, and they're going to sign the beam as well. And then on April eighth, the second graders will come over, sign the beam, there'll be some music played as the beam is going into place, sort of thing. And we'll have some, you know, brief remarks. Folks will be standing around, so remarks need to be brief. I haven't said that already. In terms of, a couple of just developments. We were working, it's, just, just trying to be good neighbors as we, as we continue to try to be, and I think our being. We had once had through, we had, at this point, more than fifty deliveries, probably sixty deliveries of large trucks delivering materials, you know, everything from dirt to, to steel, to other, to machinery. A few weeks ago, got word of what was truck that had trouble making the right-hand turn onto Webster? And then got sort of backed up in traffic or caught in traffic and then held up traffic zone. And so because of that, I'm talking to one of the neighbors and also please CPW, our product team, city councilor. I made just a couple of changes on that. One was have now have school construction zone signs, you know, allowing your avenue warning people of that there, you know, are large trucks around. And then also are making sure that whether there's delivery, folks from the site are aware of it and then looking out in case the rare truck does have a, have a, you know, trouble with the, with the backing up. What's good about this site, unlike, unlike a lot of deliveries in the city, is that they immediately pull off the road onto the construction site. They're not loading anything on Webster Street. That's just a, it's one of the values of that large site. So we made some adjustments in order, just, you know, as we get better, as we do things here. But again, there've been very, very, you know, hardly any snafus at all in terms of deliveries, and that's going well. We will be telling, make sure all the neighbors know about, as moving to April, there will be some late, later nights as they do the concrete pours on each level of this building. So for example, the first concrete pour they'll do is on the second level of the Building A. And that allows them to then protect below that from the elements, hopefully just rain at that point, in order to start doing the, some of the work in the, in the foundation basement area, plumbing and the like. But when they do those concrete pours of a whole entire level of building, it's a long day, starts early, goes late. There'll be some, additional lighting there. The sound, the noise that happens later, and that means until like eight o'clock sort of thing, it's not like, you know, what's other than that? Is just the smoothing machine, smoothing the concrete out, you know, the wet concrete out. But we're going to be communicating to, that's probably the first week of April at this point. We'll be communicating to leafleting the neighbors, putting on our website, emailing those folks for sign for email notices, make sure city councilors know, make sure, of course, you, you all know it. Just so folks, no, no surprises, if people are aware on the, on the, you know, smaller nights where it's extended, extended workday essentially. So all it's trying to keep things on schedule and also make sure that we're informing the neighborhoods best we can about any changes in the process. So hopefully you can join us on your belief.
With the time?
I believe it's nine thirty, we'll, we'll confirm.
Thanks.
This will be less.
It's less horrible, yeah, less.
Groundbreaking. But it'll be fun.
And, you know, who doesn't like big crates?
All right, any other business? Yeah, okay, motion to adjourn from anybody?
Salute.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Prince.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Watson. Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And Mr. Minia.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for who has plugged in and joined us this evening and.